Here, I'll mark it with.
I think you're done, Sean.
Jay, Jay's not going to...
Huh?
Jay sent me back.
Not now.
Not now, okay.
He can recall you, but we're done now.
Okay, sir.
Where do you go? You know, I've lost him. You've got... All right. Is infected this...
And I've actually got his card.
Oh, okay.
It hasn't even looked good yet.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Unless he might have questions about it.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, Sean?
We're going to do the mic. Board needs to recall if they have any questions.
Sounds great.
Please, the board, following orders, proceed now to one of the board's committees. Tensel, you're about to give the truth of your position on the case of... Please proceed and state your name and the record.
Becky Ruggles.
This Ruggles is presently employed in the Camdenton Middle School District.
Correct.
Presently employed as a counselor at Camdenton Middle School.
Correct.
And you're...this is your fourth year?
Yes.
And prior to coming to Camdenton, were you employed as a guidance counselor in the Richland School District?
Yes.
In addition to your role as a guidance counselor in the middle school at Richland, did you also have any testing responsibilities?
Yes.
And what was that?
I was the district testing coordinator.
Okay. And what is your role in addition to being a guidance counselor at Camdenton Middle School?
I have the title of building testing coordinator at the middle school.
So you're the school testing coordinator for the middle school?
Yes.
And you've had that position from when you started and four years ago until the current time?
Yes.
Okay. Is this the role that you perform as a school testing coordinator at Camdenton Middle School? Do you actually perform the duties?
No.
No. And why is that?
In my interview with Mr. Kirksey, when I was...before I was hired, he told me that would be part of my duties. I would be building testing coordinator. But he informed me that it was a big job in our district and it would be that we share the duties, although I would carry the title.
And was that different than your role you played at Richland?
Yes.
Okay. And what did the...did you realize what...at that point, did you realize what was going to be left of your job as school test coordinator at the middle school?
No. I...I actually don't enjoy the role of testing coordinator, so it sounded like a relief at the time. He said, "We do what is best for kids here." That is a big role to have, so we share the duties. And that's all I knew.
Now, as I recall, you testified that Mr. Kirksey said that you and he would share the role of school testing coordinator. Did that turn out to be the case during your first year?
Yes.
Did you have any control over the district's...the school's testing program?
I take inventory of the books and distribute the books and have test security.
Did the training?
I did the training.
And how was the...that first year, how was the MAP middle school testing schedule put together?
Mr. Kirksey made the schedule.
Okay. When you say that Mr. Kirksey made the schedule, was that...did you have input in that decision?
I have input along with the building leadership team committee.
Okay. Was...when you had to review along with the building leadership team, was that before or after Mr. Kirksey had presented the school's testing schedule?
He presented the school testing schedule at that leadership team committee, and that is when I had a voice in it.
Okay. So that voice was after he presented the BLT, on which you sit with the testing schedule. Did you indicate to Mr. Kirksey that you had any disagreement with the schedule?
Yes.
And what was that?
This...this past spring.
Can you talk up a little bit?
Yes, this past spring. On our most recent testing. At first, I didn't understand the schedule. It was vague, and I was sitting next to Mrs. Pat McWharter and was trying to understand the schedule. And she said, "This test session is split into two days." And I said, "You cannot do that." And she said verbally, out loud in front of the committee, "Mr. Kirksey, are you splitting? Are you allowing the students to have the writing prompt on the first day for seventh grade and then return the second day and finish this testing session?" And he said, "Yes." And we said...I said, "You're not allowed to do that." She said, "You're not allowed to do that." That is...
This is Mrs. McWharter.
Mrs. McWharter. And he said, "That is how we test this session." We've never had this writing prompt since I've been in this district. The state has not had this session since I've been in Camdenton. And he said, "That is how we do..."That's how schools do this. This session is too long. It's supposed to take 90 minutes. That's too long for kids to sit in one session. And I said, "That is not how all districts do that." Because I test...I was the district testing coordinator in Richland for many years, and while I was there, we did not give kids two days to test. And...
Would another teacher speak up about her experience?
Other teachers spoke up. We...Melinda Boycehausen said they did not test in Lebanon this way. Other teachers spoke up on ways that we could improve the schedule on the building leadership team committee that day. And Mr. Kirksey said that Desi knows about how we've tested like this in the past. Desi knows about it, that the administration knows about it here. This is the way we're going to do it. If Desi has a problem with it, I'll take the hit.
So he said he...that Desi was okay with his split testing?
Yes.
And he said the administration was okay with his split testing?
Yes.
Was there any other staff member on that BLT that said, "You know, we can...it's okay for us to do split testing"? Or were the voices of dissent?
Yes. No one agreed with that.
Okay. And other than yourself and Mrs. McWharter and the teacher who had been at Lebanon, were there other teachers that spoke up challenging the legality of doing a split session for our communication arts performance event?
Other teachers spoke up, giving ideas of how we could administer it legally.
How you could do it in one session?
In one session at a time.
But Mr. Kirksey wasn't interested in that?
No.
And the final schedule that was prepared, would you say that was prepared collaboratively among the teachers on the BLT?
No.
And how was it prepared?
Mr. Kirksey prepared it. He made one change that day, and that was to extend a mathematics session based on our suggestions. Otherwise, everything remained the same.
As school test coordinator, at the end of the testing sequence, are you required to sign off on the test that has been satisfactorily completed?
Yes.
And did you sign off your first year here?
No.
Why not?
I didn't like the practices here.
Okay. And did anybody sign off on it?
Mr. Kirksey.
Okay. Was it...would it have been possible to schedule the performance event in one session?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Is it...would it have been possible to schedule the communication arts performance event in one day?
Yes.
Okay. And was that the way it was done at Richland when you were...
Yes.
Okay. And when...when did you become involved in the issue of whether MAP testing guidelines were violated for 2013? Did you make a report to anyone?
No. I...after the initial report that we had a teacher testing, violating testing with... when Roma France came to my office to investigate that, that is...that investigation led on to further investigations of discrepancies.
Okay. At some point, did you and Mrs. McWharter meet with...
Yes. That led into other...other discrepancies.
Okay. Once the investigation began about the one teacher in math, and you and Mrs. McWharter went to Ms. France and related the scheduling problem?
Then I...at that time, I learned that Mrs. France had never known that we split a session, had never approved that. And then she understood our schedule for the first time that we...that we were cheating.
And as part, did Ms. France begin an investigation of this whole...I know there were now multiple allegations of violations of Desi's rules. Did you sit in on any of the interviews with Ms. France?
Yes.
And which interviews did you sit in on?
I sat in on the interviews when she interviewed students, and then I sat in on the interviews when she interviewed the administrators of my building.
Okay. Were you were sitting in on the interview when Ms. France interviewed Mr. Kirksey?
Yes.
And that was about the math teacher and the testing schedule?
Yes.
Okay. This is exhibit 12. And... Exhibit 12, C... 2000, beginning 2009. Is that the interview that you sat in on?
Which page?
It's C-209. It'll probably go over into 210. It's exhibit 12.
Yes.
And you were standing on that interview of Mr. Kirksey?
Yes.
And having read through it, is that an accurate depiction of what Mr. Kirksey stated to Ms. France in the interview? Mm-hmm. This...yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And particularly, I want to call your attention on page CO...C-209. I've underscored a portion of that. Could you read that for me?
He made the decision to split the session two into two days because it is longer than he can get into five sections within the day. This is the number of section he has available for testing.
And that's your recollection of Mr. Kirksey's statement when he was interviewed by Ms. France and you?
Yes.
So he says that he told them then that it was his decision?
Yes.
Does he say anything in that statement that this was a collaborative decision?
No.
Or anything like, "We planned...we prepared the schedule"?
No.
"It was me. I did it. I did it because we couldn't get the testing in. I'll take the hit."
A little bit leading, also objection leading.
It's fine. What did he say?
He said it was his decision to split the session. I felt like he took ownership of what he actually did, what he told us in the BLT meeting that he would do. He would take the hit. It was his final decision, and even though we objected to the schedule, he would...it was his decision, and he would take the hit.
And did he ever suggest in that statement that this was a collaborative effort, that we put the schedule together?
No.
Okay. And did he, during the BLT meetings, did he suggest that he had had conversations with Desi about this?
Yes.
And did he suggest in his statement that he had made any...had any conversations with Desi?
In that conversation...
In his statement with Mrs. France?
Yes.
Would you be surprised if he testified today that he didn't contact Desi about the split schedule?
Yes.
You would be surprised?
Yes.
How many years have you been on the BLT?
Two out of the three that I...I mind that this year, so three out of four, I guess.
And during those times, during BLT meetings, particularly when we're talking about MAP testing and we're talking about performance events, was it ever your impression that the schedule was arrived at collaboratively by all the BLT members?
No.
And how was the...who made the schedule?
Mr. Kirksey made the schedule.
C-153. Pardon? It's their exhibit. During this...have you seen this exhibit before?
Yes. These are...these are my notes.
Can you tell...tell the board the purpose of that memo?
Each year, when MAP testing starts, I keep a new folder for the next year, and I write tips in it as teachers come to me during testing of ideas of how we could do MAP testing better for the following year. And I keep those throughout testing. And these were notes that teachers had given me. Look at moving COM Arts Session 2, Part 2, to Day 3, where Session 3 referred to eighth grade, which has two parts. And it...build in samples...build in time for samples in COM Arts. Do you want me to go through each one?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for the board, because this was discussed by Mr. Kirksey.
Okay. Move Laker time to eighth hour, which would mean that when we have an eighth hour group that is...sometimes during testing, it's not an exact timed test. If it's not a time test, and they're in eighth hour, and the testers need extended periods of testing, which is legal on some days, they could test into their Laker time period if we flip the schedule by moving the Laker time to the end of the day versus it's at the beginning of the day. If extra time is needed in fourth hour, have A lunch, testers go to B lunch. That way, students would not...I disagree with letting students leave their test, go to lunch, and come back. I think that's breaching policy, so that would have avoided that. Needing a longer time allowance on day one was one thing the teachers had noticed that year prior. No eighth grade classes during fifth hour was a suggestion, because fifth hour is lunchtime. Students who take a long time to test should be moved out of eighth hour classes, because it had been the policy that if they didn't finish, they were allowed to come back and finish the next day, which I think is cheating. Eighth hour should be Laker time.
Laker?
Laker time, which is our homeroom time. So that gives the...some students just take longer to test, which some days are allowed. It's not an exact timed session, and they are given a suggested amount of time, which means they're allowed to finish it, however, in one setting.
Okay. Is there anything in...if that is a process, making these notes and suggestions, is something that you've always done as district test coordinator or school test coordinator?
Yes. So I can have a memory for the next year of how we might do it better.
Is there anything in that memo that suggests the district ought to go to split testing on performance events?
No. We didn't even have a performance event the year I made this...these notes.
You've looked at exhibit number seven. It's examiner's manual. And looking at C-13, we have a statement that the performance event be done in one session.
Yes.
And then right below that, you have a...there's a suggestion, if it's not a strictly time test, if the students are making progress, that they'd be allowed to finish. You understand that?
Yes.
And how does that work with a performance test? And does that mean you get to finish it two days later? Or does it mean you get some additional minutes in that one sitting?
Yes. It means you get additional minutes within that one setting.
Good. Is there...was there ever any doubt in your mind about how that worked?
Never.
Have you been anywhere else where they split that test?
No.
Okay. And the last thing I want to ask you, you...you sent a letter in the middle of this process. You sent it to Mr. Hadfield, you sent it to Roma France, and you sent it to...you sent it to Mr. Kirksey. And then that letter, you talked about that Mr. Kirksey had appeared in that...the investigation, the interview that you sat in on, that he was honest and truthful?
Yes.
And would you be surprised if he said that statement about that he didn't make up the test was not what he had said?
Yes.
Okay. And are you certain that, as you observed and listened in on that interview by Ms. France, that Mr. Kirksey said, "I made up the test schedule"?
Would you repeat that?
Yeah. Are you certain that during the interview that you sat in on, that Ms. France interviewed Mr. Kirksey about these alleged violations, that he didn't relate words to the effect that he made up the schedule?
Yes, he did.
And you're clear about that?
Yeah.
Okay. And so when you said that he was truthful and honest, you didn't know that he kind of recanted his words?
No.
And also in that letter, and I think the thing that impressed me most, you state in that letter to the words the effect of, "I'm the school test coordinator. You know, I put my main on it. I step up to the plate. I accept responsibility."
Yes, I do.
Is that something that you've always had a source of pride in taking responsibility?
I do, and...
Even if you had no control over how that testing was split?
I am disappointed. I'm disappointed. He was...he was honest in the interview with Ms. France, and so was Joel Carey. And I was...I'm very proud, too, at that time, to be a Laker.
To be a Laker.
To be a Laker. Because they were handling a...we didn't cover it up, and...
And that's one of the reasons that you stepped up and took responsibility?
Right, right. And as a building...a testing coordinator, I...I should have maybe called...or I should have called Roma France and made sure she knew it. Or I should have called Desi, because it was wrong. But I was convinced they already knew it. And Mr. Kirksey told me they already knew it, and he would take the hit if they didn't like it, because he thought it was what was best for kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do you want a short break?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm good.
So you held the position of training coordinator?
Yes.
And I guess you first joined Camdenton. When would that be, ma'am?
Fall of 2010.
All right. Fall of 2010. And 2010 or 2011?
It was the 2010-2011 school year.
Okay. Do you know what the...whether a performance event was part of the MAP testing in the spring of 2010?
Yes.
And what is your knowledge as to whether a performance event was part of the testing in the spring of 2010?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'll speak up. I apologize. What is your knowledge, from whatever source, ma'am, as to whether a performance event, and specifically if it's communication arts, seventh grade, was an event in the MAP testing in the spring of 2010?
It was.
All right. And what is your knowledge as to whether Desi did a site visit during the spring of 2010?
At Camdenton?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. I wasn't here.
Yeah, you don't know one way or the other on that?
No.
Okay, that's fine. In 2010, what is your knowledge as to whether that was a split session?
I heard that it was, but I...I didn't have prior knowledge. I don't know.
Sure. And you'd also heard, and we can go through your statement, but you heard from a number of employees that these split sessions had occurred in the past before you came to Camdenton. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And you also heard that people understood that those split sessions had gone to the district training coordinator? In other words, the schedule themselves, right?
I heard that from Mr. Kirksey.
Well, and also other employees, correct?
I heard...no. I heard that from Mr. Kirksey.
Okay. Well, let's start off with when you first became...Mr. Kirksey used the word "shared" a moment ago. It wasn't the word "shared" that he used, correct? That this would be a shared responsibility?
I would have to read my statement again to get the exact word.
Let's do that, because it kind of makes a difference, potentially, potentially not. If you look at the very first page, ma'am, in your first paragraph... Yes? It'd be Ruggles, number one or two. Which one are you looking at, ma'am?
I have C-254.
I have C-254.
All right. So C-254 would be, it would be number one, Long Ruggles, folks, number one, Long Ruggles. And if you'd be so kind, and I'm sure your, your recollection was at least, even though it'd been a while, you, you put down, "He told me that the building," do you see it there at the bottom of the first paragraph?
What page are you on?
I'm on 254, the very first page. I apologize. And the first paragraph, folks, it'll be the last sentence. Because earlier, when asked and by Tom, you used the word "shared." And I just want to clarify, okay?
Okay.
I'm not getting on to you. But here you say, "He," referring to Sean, "told you that the building testing coordinator is a big job, and although I would carry the title, in Camden Middle School, we work together on the MAP testing as a joint effort, and we always do what's best for kids." Was that what was said during, to the best of your recollection?
Yes, something like that.
All right. So you would have the title, and you would have the, the position and responsibilities of testing coordinator. Is that a fair statement?
That I would have the title.
Okay. Well, and then when it says, "We work together," indeed, there's a, a building committee that gets together and, and discusses the schedule. Is that a fair statement?
Or would you repeat it?
Sure. And it's, is it a fair statement that a building committee gets together and discusses the schedule?
We're presented with the schedule and we discuss it when, when we're looking at it.
Sure. And then, I mean, Sean never said, "Oh, by the way, you have the title only." I mean, that's not what you wrote here, correct? You didn't say "title only," correct?
The court can read from the second.
Okay. Ma'am, so you were the training coordinator, and from there, you also received a certain amount of training. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. And how many occasions did you go and, and obtain training through Desi?
In my lifetime or through Camden Town?
Oh, heck, either one would be fine.
Eleven times that I went to training through Desi, and while in Camden Town, we were trained through technology, which is the new way Desi trains in the state.
Sure. And let me go through a few things that we've already talked about quite a bit, but I just want to see if you remember them. Real quickly, ma'am, this would be C-80, which would be part of the training coordinator's manual. There you go. Can you see that okay?
I have to change glasses.
That makes two of us, except for contacts.
Okay.
All right. Are you looking at it, ma'am?
I've got it.
And when you look at item, oh, it's item six there. Do you see that? On the checklist for the school test coordinator?
I'm sorry. Eighty? Okay.
Do you see that, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. And indeed, you did that, and we've seen it, so I'm not going to pull it. But do you remember your April 4th fax?
Yes.
That you, as training coordinator, sent to Roma France as district training coordinator?
I do.
And within that was the split sessions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so you complied with, with your part there, at least of sending the testing schedule prior to testing, correct?
Yes.
Now, ma'am, is it, is it fair to say that, that at the time you sent that, you believed that the district training coordinator would read and review that schedule?
I, I did not expect her to. I think probably based on that I've been a district testing coordinator, and I didn't review schedules in my district of Richland before. I received them and held them. If, if Desi requested them because they wanted to come for a visit, I had them and I could tell them, I would pull them to tell them when they could come for a visit to a building.
Well, let's turn to this one if we could, ma'am. It's part of the DTC training script for the 2013 training, and specifically, it's page six of eight.
I'm sorry, how was that a title?
Yeah, it's just a black book. Yeah, I'm headed that direction. Make it real quick, is that okay?
Please.
Kind of hard to find since there's so many books. And I'll do one better. Heck, I'll just give you mine.
Well, I took it out because it was a clean topic. We, we have seen that one already. Would you take a moment to look at slide number 27 down at the bottom, please?
Yeah, just to repeat that, I, I'd asked if you'd be kind enough to look at slide 27 down at the bottom, and, and when you've done so, just indicate audibly for the record, please. Do you see where it says, "DTC responsibilities prior to testing"?
Yes.
And it talks about an assessment plan that would be, the DTC should review the district's assessment plan, and that would include the schedule. And then it goes on and says, "Please keep in, keep this in mind as you..."
Hold on, Jay. Are you asking if that includes the schedule? Should you make a little statement?
I'll, I'll ask. Each DTC, sure. Each DTC should review their district's assessment plan. Do you know what an assessment plan is, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. And does that in part include information related to the schedule, to your knowledge?
Well, the district's assessment plan is, is not individual schedules.
Correct. Okay. But is it inclusive of the topic of schedules, ma'am?
It's, as I understand it, and understand it, the district's assessment plan is the assessment plan for the year of all assessments that we give, which are many.
Okay. And an assessment, is that basically the test that's given?
I'm sorry?
Is it an assessment, is that what they call a test that's given?
The tests that are given for special services, for IQs, for all sorts of things.
And, and it goes on, "The timing of the assessments has changed due to the return of performance events." Do you see that next sentence?
Uh huh.
And then it goes on, "Please keep this in mind as you are scheduling the testing." Do you see that?
Yes.
And my question was, were you present during this training where it had this slide, ma'am?
I don't, I don't remember this exact slide. We, I had a, we watched a webinar. That is our training now, is that we view a webinar rather than go to a sit-down training, which is what they used to do in my first 11 years of training. But that's the statewide training now, is that you watch a webinar. I, I don't remember exactly every slide.
And do you remember whether that webinar included slide 27 or not?
I don't remember.
Okay. So if you go ahead and just put that down for the side. So as you understood it, the hierarchy would be the DTC, the hierarchy of the MAP would be DTC on top, training coordinator, and then test examiners. Would that be the hierarchy, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. And so the schedules would be made, and then there's a sequence here where you, as test coordinator, would send it to the DTC, which is what you did on April 4th.
Yes.
And then the DTC would read, review, and maintain those schedules, correct?
She would receive them and keep them on file in case Desi requested them. That is, that is how I understood the job of district testing coordinator.
Well, if you didn't under, did, did Ms. France ever tell you, "Hey, I'm not reading and reviewing these schedules that you're sending me for compliance"?
She, she never told me she was or she was not.
Okay. So did you make an assumption that she was or was not reading the schedules?
I would have made the assumption that she was not reading the schedules.
Okay. So if she, if you made that assumption, well, if she didn't tell you one way or the other, do you know whether Ms. France ever told Sean Kirsey or any of the members of the building committee whether she was or was not reading and reviewing these schedules that were being submitted to her?
I don't know.
Isn't it true that during the building committee, there was discussion about that these schedules were going to the district training coordinator?
During the building leadership team committee meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kirsey said that, that our administration knows that we have tested like this in the past. That assumption was made.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if those are the exact words.
Sure. And, and do you deny or not recall whether, one way, do you deny or not recall whether others had that same assumption and belief that the district training coordinator was receiving the schedules?
We were led to believe that.
Yeah. And also, there was discussion during this meeting where it was believed that the training coordinator was sending the schedules to Desi, correct?
The district testing coordinator?
Yes, ma'am. There was discussion during that meeting that it was being, that the schedules were being sent to Desi.
I don't, I don't remember that. I remember that, the discussion being, I don't remember that exact conversation. I do remember that conversation about Desi during that meeting being that Desi had been here prior when they were testing this way, and they did not disapprove, or that Desi knew that we tested this way and they did not disapprove. I don't remember how that came up.
And, ma'am, was that, that was voiced by more than one person, was it not?
No.
Okay.
Not that I remember.
All right. Let's next turn, if we may. So while we're on the subject of reading or not reading, when did you first learn that Ms. France was not reading the schedules that were being submitted to her?
When I had a meeting in her office.
When was that?
Well, I don't know that it was that I learned she was not reading the schedules. It's when I understood that she did not know we had a split session and had never known that.
When did you first...
I don't, I don't think you could tell by looking at our schedule that it was a split schedule. Because I, I...
I thought as training coordinator, you'd sent those split sessions to her by fax.
I sent her, I did fax her our schedule, but it is vague. I had Mrs. McWhorter, as I stated earlier, explain it to me as I set by her in the meeting.
I'll get, I'll get that in a moment then. But when did you first learn that Ms. France was not reading the schedules that were being submitted to her? Was that on May 20th, ma'am?
I don't recall.
Do you remember the event of first learning that Ms. France was not reading the schedules that were being submitted to her as district training coordinator?
That she was not reading them?
Yes, ma'am. Remember that event coming to your attention or awareness?
I, I don't remember the date. I know that has been brought up this year, but I don't remember the date.
Okay, well, who brought it up?
If you would turn to your statement, Long Ruggles, one, please. And here I'll assist.
Ma'am, if you would turn to 257, there's a handwritten note that says, "I found out on May 20 that Mrs. France had no idea that this had been happening this year or in the past." Is that your handwriting?
Yes.
Why did you write that?
Because I was reviewing my statement, and I found that I had not made that very clear, and I wanted to make sure that was in there.
Okay. And then I want to kind of start toward the first, if you go to the first one on 254, let's start on page one and go through it in chronology. We're not going to go through all of this at all, but I want to hit a few points. In the second paragraph, you talk about, Mr. Kirsey says that this is the way we've always done it here. And do you see that?
I'm sorry, not yet. In the second paragraph?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't want to get the job...
Yes, sir, it is. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. It's the 10th line down from the top, ma'am. Let me know when you're there.
Yes, I see that.
All right. Says, "I was told by Mr. Kirsey that this is the way we've always done it here, and these practices have been proved every year by the district testing coordinator and Desi." Do you see that?
Yes.
And then, it looks like you spoke with Matt McWhorter, Pat McWhorter, Susan Grady, Jane Saifert, if I've mispronounced that, I apologize, and Nancy Groves. Do you see that?
Yes.
And you talked to them, and you say, "If I understood the practice is in place correctly." Do you see that?
Yes.
And then, if you'll go down, you'll see where you say, "They told me that it was the way it, it had always been done." Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. 257. If you could turn there, please, ma'am. And there's a little bit at the end of one paragraph, and it starts another. Now, in that paragraph, you state, and it's going to be your second sentence, ma'am, "I honestly could not believe that was the way it handled, it was handled, but it was so accepted by the others." What others are you referring to, ma'am?
The people that I questioned, and they told me, the ones that you just stated in the other paragraph, and they told me this is the way it has been. They understood my dismay, but this is the way that it has been handled in our district. Pat McWhorter, Jane Saifert, Nancy Groves. They understood my dismay, but knew this is the way it has been going.
Basically, they, they said, yes, what Mr. Kirsey said, as far as going to the DTC, and we believed Desi's approved it, that those things were correct. That's the way it was done.
That goes way beyond what the witness...
That is not what I meant.
All right.
By that.
You say it was so accepted by...
Okay.
You say it was so accepted by the others that I assumed wrongly that it was an accepted practice by our DTC. Do you see that? And, and these others, did they provide...
Just give her a chance to answer your first question.
Sure. Was that the rest of that sentence, ma'am? Says, "I honestly could not believe..." Says, "I honestly could not believe the way it was handled, but it was so accepted by others that I assumed," and then you have in parentheses, "wrongly that it was accepted practice by our DTC."
Yes, I assumed wrongly.
And then at the bottom of that paragraph, the last sentence, do you see where you say, "It was common practice before I came?"
Yes, that is what I, I've been told.
What did you mean, "common practice"?
That they had tested like this before I came, when, when they had the writing prompt before.
And if you would next go to the very last page in your statement, please. It would be 259, C-259 for the record. Are you there, ma'am?
Yes.
And there's a sentence at the top, "I will repeat that from day one, I have questioned the testing practices in the CMS building. However, after voicing my concerns to fellow employees, I was convinced that this was the norm for CMS." Do you see that?
Yes.
Who are the fellow employees to whom you voiced your concerns, and you were in responses, and by their responses convinced that this was the norm for CMS?
Mr. Kirksey, Pat McWhorter, the CalMarts teachers that I mentioned earlier, Jane Saifert, Mrs. Groves. I was astounded by the testing.
And when you spoke to all those people, ma'am, did you believe that they believed these were accepted practices?
They disagreed with them also, but said they had spoken up before, and they had not been able to change them.
And when you submitted your schedule on April 4th, did you knowingly submit a schedule that you believed to be in violation of DESI standards?
It was not my schedule. It was Mr. Kirksey's schedule, and I was asked to fax it to Ginger.
If you'd be so kind, ma'am, when you submitted that schedule on April 4th, did you knowingly send a schedule that you personally believed, based on the information you had at the time, violated DESI standards?
No. I didn't, I didn't at that time understand the schedule. The BLT meeting was after that date, and I, I did not understand the schedule until I sat in the BLT meeting and saw... And we discussed, and we discussed the, I asked the questions, and this, we discussed it. Because it said, "Normal day."
We, we can go through, but the BLT meeting was on March 15, correct?
I would have to look at the dates again.
Okay. But do you remember, I mean, the BLT, because you said there were some changes and so on and so forth, the BLT meeting occurred before April 4th, right?
Then if it was before, if the, I would have to check the dates.
We, we all, we had that in black and white already, so we're not going to spend that time, okay? So I'm back to my question, and that is, did you knowingly, as the Training Coordinator, did you knowingly submit a schedule that you believed to violate DESI when you, as Training Coordinator, sent that split session schedule to the District Training Coordinator on April 4, 2013?
Did I submit it to DESI?
I'm sorry, I'll slow down.
Okay.
On April 4, when you sent that daily schedule that included the split session, did you knowingly, as Training Coordinator, send a schedule that violated DESI to the District Training Coordinator? Did you knowingly violate DESI when you sent that schedule?
Yes. I faxed a schedule that I received from Mr. Kirksey that split a session into two sessions, and I faxed it to Mrs. Roma Fr- France.
And did you believe it violated DESI when you, as Training Coordinator, sent that to Ms. France?
I believed it still had in it the, the things that I had objected to. But I was told he was the administrator of the building, and the schedule would remain, and if DESI had a problem with it, he would take the hit.
If you'd be so kind, did you believe that that schedule you faxed violated DESI? So, did you tell anyone that you believed it violated DESI? Did you tell the District Training Coordinator?
No.
Okay. Why not?
I felt helpless. I had told my boss, and he had said, "This is the way we will do it." And I did it.
Did you contact DESI if you had this belief that it violated?
I did not. I should have turned us into DESI.
I mean, in your May 23 letter, and you, you told us that you were, I don't want to use wrong words, but you took responsibility for the positions and responsibility of Training Coordinator in your May 23 email, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And one of your responsibilities, was it not one of your responsibilities to make sure these schedules were DESI compliant?
It should have been, if I had been given the power to do that.
Well, was it, was it taken out of your job description, or, I mean?
Mr. Kirksey did not let me have the power to change the schedule.
Why do you say that, ma'am?
Because I objected to the schedule. I objected in front of many people, and he said, "This is the schedule we will have."
So this schedule that you told us, you sent to Training Coordinator and knew it violated DESI, I, I guess it was then sent to 85 people to use before the testing began, correct?
From Mr. Kirksey's office.
From Janelle Horton, correct?
His secretary.
And so when that email with the schedules, did you know and believe, when that email was sent, it was going to be used by this district, did you believe at that time that we, they were about to do a test that violated DESI standards?
I did.
Let's talk about the interview for a moment, where you and Ms. France are present with Sean. Do you remember that event?
Yes.
What was the duration or length, ma'am, to the best of your recollection?
What was the relation?
How long were you all talking to Sean where he was asked questions?
I don't remember. I honestly don't remember. Maybe 30 minutes, I, I do not recall.
Well, do you remember all the topics that were discussed during that interview?
I do not, we were... I don't know. I was just sitting there as another person that was being questioned also that day.
Did you tell Ms. France on that occasion, while you're sitting in the room with Sean, that Sean forced you to send the schedule?
That Sean forced me?
Yes, ma'am.
To, to what?
To send this schedule.
Could I look at the minutes from that? If, if it, I don't recall that.
Did you, during this interview, do you remember Sean talking about how, during the interview, do you remember him saying kind of the same thing he said during the Building Committee meeting, that the schedule had been gone to the DTC in years past?
I would have to read the interview again.
And do you remember Sean saying that the DTC, he believed the DTC had sent the schedules on to DESI after the DTC received the schedules?
I need, I need to read the interview again, I'm sorry.
It is number 12. C-209. Well, I, I'm not asking, what I'm trying to do, Mike, is to, to test your recollection, because there's several thi- to test your recollection. I understand. But the point is- Correct. And there's been some testimony, ma'am, that you were present during this interview, and as to what you did or did not recall. Do you recall Sean mentioning that a performance events had been split in the, in the historical past before 2013 during that interview?
Yes.
Do you recall Sean stating that there was, could be a difference of interpretation, or he believed that the Examiner's Manual could be interpreted to support a split session?
Yes.
And... Were those some of the same things that Sean had stated during the Building Committee meeting?
Yes.
And you were asked earlier about the word "he" made the schedule versus "we." Is it possible that Sean said, "We made the schedule?" During this interview, ma'am?
He could have said, "We made the schedule."
Okay. You said something about keeping some notes, and is that something you did every year?
Yes.
Okay. And was that as part of your assisting and designing the schedule?
Yes, I know. Yeah, it is how I tried to help design the schedule. It was my suggestions that I would send to Mr. Kirksey.
And was that part of your trying to help in implementing the schedule?
Yes.
And did you share those notes with the DTC on an annual basis, or before or after the schedule would be drafted?
No.
Okay, that's just something you kept on your own?
It's for our building.
Okay. And you had notes when you came into the 2013 scheduling?
Yes.
Okay. And did you share that information with the committee whenever the schedule was finalized?
Yes.
And were some of those notes or thoughts or your suggestions placed into the schedule that you eventually faxed on April 4th?
I do not remember if I had the schedule of math being a longer session, but that is the one change that was made that day. I don't think any of my suggestions were followed.
Mr. McDormand, I think we're expecting a 4 o'clock phone call. I have- I'll go ahead and pass- Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Brief follow-up?
Very brief. The individuals that you testified and said this is the way it's been done, I think you mentioned Mrs. Groves.
Mrs. Saifert.
Are those all individuals that expressed to you that they disagreed with the split testing?
Yes.
Their disagreement was overruled?
Yes.
So they went along with it because their objections in the past have been overruled?
Yes.
Okay. The question was, Quiddy said, "We" or "he," what's your recollection from what, what's in this Roma statement?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Mr. Kirksey was trying to play games with you with "we" or "he." I'll refer, I'll withdraw that. What's the statement say?
"He made the decision to split the session two into two days because it is longer than he can get into five sections within the day."
And why, and why you may not be 100% sure, is it your belief that he said, "He made the schedule?"
Yes.
And is that consistent with statements that Mr. Kirksey has made throughout the years at the BLT meetings that he makes the schedule?
Yes.
Okay, so that's consistent.
Right.
Okay. And there were some questions about you were working together with, with Mr. Kirksey when you first started. At that time, did you believe that you were going to have a collaborative effort between Mr. Kirksey and yourself on map testing?
Yes.
Okay. And how did that turn out?
I didn't.
You had no, you had no say other than voicing your concerns about the illegality of what was being done?
Right.
The first time that you found out that Ms. France did not know about this past practice, was that when you and Mrs. McWhorter met with her to talk about the multiple violations going on at Camden High School?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon? Camden to Middle School. The last thing I want to ask you, this has been battered around all, all day, but this is Exhibit 27? Slide 27, and it's page, there you go. Would you, the second sentence says, "Each DTC should review their district's assessment plan in preparation for the MAP grade." You're, you're a consular, you've been a District Test Coordinator. The test assessment plan of a district includes EOCs, grade level. What other tests go into the assessment plan?
It could be many things. It's whatever your district has decided upon. It's, it's Terranova, it's EOCs, I'm not sure what all the elementary buildings do here. It's preschool testing. It is many, many, many.
So when we talk about assessment plan, we're not talking about just the MAP test, are we?
No.
So if we read that sentence, it says, "Each DTC should review their district's assessment plan in preparation for MAP testing." Does it say that the DTC should review the MAP testing?
No.
Fine. That's all I have.
During the interview process, you, you kind of went back there for a moment. Do you remember Ms. France writing notes of what Sean was talking about during that interview?
Yes.
And do you remember Sean making some correction of her notes, and, and you're confirming those corrections to be made?
I don't remember.
Next, there is, if I could turn to it here. During that interview, while we're still on that subject, do you remember a DESI-form schedule that only had three sessions on it being shown to Sean? Do you remember that, ma'am?
I, I don't see it.
It is, yeah, Exhibit 32. It's, it's right here. Exhibit 32, ma'am. Yes. Do you remember that being shown to Sean? C-175 or Exhibit A-32?
I saw this yesterday.
Well, do you deny that Ms. France had that with her at the interview and showed it to Sean, and you and he both confirmed that that was not the schedule?
I don't remember.
Did you see it before yesterday?
I don't remember seeing it before yesterday.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
So I didn't, I need to leave the room?
Mr. McDormand, does the witness need to excuse herself, or can she sit? Okay. You need to go back to the witness holding here.
So that the board and the, and the public here understands, it's, it was my understanding that, that Mr. Kirksey wants to call a witness out of order in his case. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. They were supposed to call in from China at 4:00.
All right. I show it's 10 after 4 now.
I, I would say we proceed and wait until if we win the phone rings.
You, well...
Okay. Uh, Jill tells me that Randy, it was Randy Dickerson, uh, that Randy is in Taiwan and cannot get phone service, so we may proceed with the next witness.
All right. Call your next witness.
Mr. McDormand, I have, uh, an allowance for an agent to take a quick pit stop.
All right. We'll, all right, we'll take, uh, five, 10-minute break, and then will you, you have your next witness available?
We will.
All right.
Fair and true statement that as you understand it, testing examiners are not the ones who are to create schedules.
The school testing coordinator is to create the schedule, but to have then input with the examiners and with the administration, with the building leadership team, whoever works in their building, yes.
Okay. And then, uh, they receive that input, and then the train, the testing coordinator gives that schedule to you, is that correct?
They send it to us, yes.
And we've seen how on C-80 that's supposed to occur prior to the testing, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and as you understand it, are, are you supposed to, to be part of making sure those testing schedules are DESI compliant?
No.
Okay. So you, that, that's up to the testing...
That is done upfront in the training. They have the sample schedule and know how to build it.
Did you ever tell Becky that, hey, I'm not gonna look at these schedules or read them?
No, I never said that.
Okay. Did you ever tell Becky, hey, it's solely your responsibility to make sure these are DESI compliant?
No.
Okay. You're just saying that that's to be understood because she receives training?
That's understood from the training. The training is very explicit.
Did Becky, before testing occurred, ever come to you and tell you that she knowingly submitted to you a de, a schedule that was a split session and she believed to be in violation of DESI standards?
No.
Has she ever said that to you, that she knowingly gave you a split session schedule believing it violated DESI standards when she gave it to you?
What she said to me was, she brought the schedule, I looked at it, and I had never seen that schedule before, the daily schedule. And she said, "Did you know that Mr. Kirksey split this schedule?" And I said, "No, how would I know that?" And she said, "Well, you wouldn't, because this schedule is designed so someone wouldn't be able to figure it out."
So she's never told you that she knowingly sent you that schedule before testing and believed it was not DESI compliant when she sent it to you?
No, she did not.
Would that be a problem for her to knowingly send you a schedule that, as testing coordinator, she believed was not DESI compliant?
It would be a problem unless she was forced to do it.
True. The first time she told you she was forced, or there was Mr. Kirksey, was that before or after the first started flying as to someone may be getting in trouble?
It was on May the 20th when I found out about the schedule being split.
That's right. So it'd be after there was some issue and someone was going to be held accountable, correct?
About what?
That she first told you that there was some issue?
No. I didn't, no. The only thing that had occurred up to that point was the incident with the teacher cheating and the untrained proctor in the classroom. I knew nothing about the testing schedule being out of compliance until May the 20th.
When you interviewed Sean, uh, you and Becky and Sean were present, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you remember having a, a form with you, a, a form of the schedule at the middle school?
No, I don't.
Uh, let's take a moment and look if we could. Uh, let's start with, oh, it's number 30 if I recall correctly. Yes, if you'd be so kind, ma'am, uh, A-30. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Now, who is Ginger Martin, is your assistant, or...
She's my secretary, yes.
All right. Did, did you ask Ginger to, uh, have Becky, the training coord, the testing coordinator, to send this to you?
I had, I had asked Ginger to collect the schedules, yes, and put them in a folder.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, on April 4, 2013, do, do you remember having received this fax of the schedules?
Uh, I did not see this schedule until May the 20th.
And if you would please, ma'am, turn to, uh, I think it's 297 if I recall correctly. Yes, 297. Now, you know from general knowledge that the Communication Arts is a 96, is a 90-minute test?
I'm sorry?
The 7th grade Communication Arts is a 90-minute test time period?
Yes.
And with that in mind, do you see where the 7th Session 2 for Communication Arts is scheduled for April 16th on C dash 297?
Yes, I do.
And there's only, what, a 62-minute time period there?
Yes.
I tried to do the math right.
Yeah.
So it's 90 minutes, so obviously it's not finished, and that's on April 16th. If you would move to C dash 298, which is April 17th, do you see where that's the same Communication Arts 7th Session 2?
I understand that now, after Becky pointed it out to me, but it has the words "normal schedule" and huge bold print on there, and so when someone's looking at that, it's very confusing.
Okay. Well, you didn't understand "normal schedule" was, was 47 minutes?
I don't actually know what the middle school schedule is like every day, so no, I would not recognize it.
But what we do know is the first day of the 16th is, is only 62 minutes, so obviously it's not finished, and therefore we also obviously know that on Wednesday, the 17th, it's the Part 2. In other words, it's been split, correct?
I don't know that.
Well, if you only do 62 minutes on one day total, and it's a 90-minute test, do you have some minutes left to go on a 90-minute test?
It's not clear to me what was happening in this schedule.
If you only have 62 minutes on one day, and it's a 90-minute test, are there minutes left?
I suppose so.
Suppose so, all right. And then we have a second day of the same test on April 17th, correct?
Okay.
Now, if you turn, please, to 31. Uh, this was sent originally to Becky, and then it got to Sean. Did you receive a review, 31, which consists of C-158 and 159, on or about April 4, 2013?
Yes, we received it in our office on that date.
Okay. And did you review it that day, ma'am?
Ginger brought it in and showed it to me and said, "Look at this. We can't tell anything from this, nor could DESI tell anything from this." And I said, "Well, you'll need to get the other schedule."
You said what, ma'am?
I said, "You will have to ask them to send you a more detailed schedule."
Okay. Well, did Ginger tell you that about two hours earlier, before 9:01, to be specific, that she had the daily schedules that were part of that April 4th fax?
No, she did not.
So you have a schedule that you had some questions about. Uh, did she ever tell you that she'd gotten the fax showing the split session before that form?
No, because what Ginger does is when the building sent her a schedule, she types them into this format that we're seeing here on C-190, 159. And so the schedule that I saw was the one that Ginger typed into the format.
Okay. If you turn to A-3, A-32, or number 32, which is C-175, could you turn there, please, ma'am? Okay. Is that the schedule you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Who was it that did that schedule?
Ginger typed this from the daily schedule that Becky sent.
Okay. Well, there's only three sessions there, but that daily schedule in the April 4th fax had four.
Yes, she made an error because she saw the words "normal schedule" and thought it was a normal day.
So did you review, uh, the A-32 after you say Ginger's the one that did this?
No, I didn't. I, I just glanced at it and she put it in the folder, so she just said, "I have it," and I have it typed, and I said, "Fine."
And A-32 would be the last schedule that was done, is that correct?
I believe so.
All right. And then Ginger would be the one who designed and implemented and, and did this schedule?
She typed it into this format, yes.
The, back to the interview for a moment, ma'am. Uh, what we just went to on A-32, do you remember taking that with you when you met with Sean?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And do you remember his response when you showed it to him?
I remember Mr. Carey having a response. I'm not sure I remember Mr. Kirksey having a response.
Okay. Well, do you deny that Sean had a response, or you just don't recall one way or the other?
I just remember they said, "This isn't right, Session 4 is missing."
Okay. And, uh, do you remember, uh, Becky also confirming that that was an incorrect form? Did Becky also confirm that wasn't the right format?
I don't re, I don't recall that. I don't know.
How long do you remember that interview taking place on May 22nd?
Pardon me?
How long do you recall? Was it a 10-minute, 15, 20, whatever you recall, how long did you meet with Sean and ask him questions or gather information on May 22nd?
It might've been about 30 to 45 minutes, I'm not sure.
Okay. And did you take notes of everything he said, or just kinda bits and pieces?
Most of what he said, the information. Then I let him read my notes and ask if they were correct before he left.
Do you remember him making some corrections to your notes and Becky confirming corrections?
No, he said, "That looks accurate to me."
Okay. And, uh, do you remember during that interview process Sean bringing up that historically, uh, there had been split sessions before 2013?
I don't recall that, but he might have.
Do you remember Sean bringing up that historically i, it was believed that the district training coordinator received the schedules, including the split sessions?
District testing coordinator?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't recall that. I don't remember that.
One way or the other?
Not really, no.
Okay. Do you remember Sean bringing up that he believed the examiner's manual to be subject to interpretation to allow a split session?
I do remember him saying that, yes.
Okay. Do you remember Sean bringing up that he thought that you, ma'am, had, had read these schedules when you'd received them?
I don't, I don't recall that.
Well, if Sean and the other test examiners are never told that you're not reading them, is it reasonable for them to believe that since you're at the top of the hierarchy and you receive the schedules, you read them?
Say that again, please?
I'll try.
Okay.
Unless Sean and the other test examiners are specifically told, hey, I as DTC, I'm not reading them. And you're, you're agreeing that never happened, right? You never told the test examiners, "I'm not reading those schedules that you're sending to me."
No, I don't think so, but...
With that being the case, is it reasonable, since they're sending these to you, that they may think you're reading them? Does that sound reasonable?
I don't know. We have a process, and then that's the school test coordinator's responsibility to make sure that the schedules are correct, and then they send them to me.
Sure is.
My job is to collect them and have them if DESI calls, be, if they want to make a visit, and it's strictly for what time is the scheduling taking, what time is the testing taking place?
And you've told us that, and I respect. My question, though, is since, is it reasonable, is it sound reasonable for them to believe that you would read the schedules that you're being, that you're receiving? Does that...
I'm not sure that...
Does it sound reasonable?
The test examiners would even think about that.
Well, okay. Uh, the test examiners, it's not their responsibility to draft the schedule and make it DESI compliant, correct?
Correct.
And Sean was a test examiner in 2013, correct?
Yes.
He took the test examiner training?
Yes.
Now, test examiners, are they given the, the webinar that district testing coordinators, I got it right that time, and school testing coordinators are given?
They are giving the webinar for grade level, uh, examiner training, I believe is what it's called.
That's right. But I'm sorry that I was unclear or whatever. I had just asked as to the training the DTCs and the STCs received. Do the test examiners receive that training? The same training?
There are different trainings, and, uh, there's a, a webinar for just the DTCs. There's a webinar for the DTCs and the STCs, and then there's a webinar that the STCs and the grade level examiners watch.
You broke it all down and made it quicker, thank you. Uh, the Training Coordinator's Manual, do the test examiners receive that?
Uh, no, they receive an examiner's manual.
The Training Coordinator's Manual that has C-79 and C-80, who receives that?
The school testing coordinators and the district testing coordinator.
And by the way, slide 27 that you and I went through before, that's from the DTC training script for the spring of 2013, correct? Here you go. I'll show it to you and make it quicker, okay? If I don't drop it in the meantime. If I could, please, ma'am.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure that's the DTC training script with slide 27.
Okay.
Before today, had you told anybody in administration that you were not reading the schedules all these years that had been sent to you from the middle school and the other schools?
No one ever asked.
Before today, had you told anybody that you considered it the responsibility of each STC to make sure those schedules were DESI compliant?
I don't know that we ever talked about that. It's outlined in the manual, and I follow the manual.
Sure. When you did your investigation, did you give a statement to yourself?
No, I wrote the report.
Sure. Did you ask your quest, self-questions about whether you had, uh, told anyone below you that you would not be reading and therefore making sure these schedules were compliant?
I guess I don't understand the significance of your question and the relevance of it.
Your reading of these, the word "you" and the things we've talked about, is that you do not have to read them to make sure they're compliant. You just assume they are?
No, I am only to collect them so DESI has a record of a time to come and do a visit.
Do you remember Sean telling you, uh, during that interview on May 22nd, that, that the building, uh, leadership team, I think it's called, ma'am, met, uh, as part of the schedule?
Yes.
Um, by the way, how did it first come to your attention that there was an issue? There, there's reference in Becky's statement that you told her that, this is gonna be complicated, but not, that Hatfield had told you that a parent had brought it to his attention. Is that what happened?
Could you step over this?
I sure can, I'm sorry. How did it come to your attention there was an issue? Did you talk to Mr. Hatfield?
Dr. Hatfield called me.
Okay. And did he tell you that a parent had brought it to his attention related to this split session issue?
I believe that's what he said. Or he said he had received a call that a teacher, with allegations that a teacher was cheating on the map test.
I wanna talk a little bit about what's count two, ma'am, the charges... I want to talk a little bit about what's count two, ma'am, the charges. Let me find that here. First off, there was some discussion about him, uh, being, uh, in the, not in the hall, but, but proctoring. Uh, you understand that's not part of the charges we're deciding here today, correct? Or do you know?
Yes.
And then, secondly, what was the date of the first, uh, time that there was some, something related to proctoring or not proctoring? One of the dates is what, April sixteen?
April sixteenth, yes.
Okay, and, and what do you understand happened on April sixteen?
Uh, to the best of my recollection, um... I really would like to see my report because I don't want to give you wrong information.
Uh, I think that's on C... Betsy, you want to help me out? C twelve. A twelve, thank you.
Which number? I'm sorry.
A twelve, ma'am.
Are you referring to this? Yes, I refer- referring to the report.
Yeah, what, and take, take your time and look at any that you want to. Evidently, there was some allegation or instant on April sixteen, two thousand thirteen.
Uh, yes, uh, Mrs. Horton was watching a communication arts testing session, um... Just a minute, let me make sure I got the right place here. Okay. Mr. Kirksey, uh, asked Mrs. Horton to come down and stay in the classroom with the students, and, um, while he was gone, a student had a question about the MAP test. And so, Mrs. Horton called Mrs. McQuarter, or called Mrs. Grady in the guidance office and asked to speak to Mrs. McQuarter because a student had a question, and she wanted to know if she could answer it or not. So, Mrs. McQuarter wondered why Mrs. Horton was proctoring the MAP test because she had not been trained. So, she went to the room and took over the test, answered the student's question, and during that time, they were, it was a time portion of the test. So, they were looking for the start and stop times and couldn't find it. And they tried to contact Mr. Kirksey and couldn't find him, so they had to go ahead and let the students finish out the test to the end of the hour, and then, um, Mrs. McQuarter sent Mrs. Horton back to her office where she works and collected the test schedules and took them back to the guidance office.
Is this the one where Sean said that, that Janelle was going to wait for him to return and basically give him some doughnuts and wait till he returned? Is this the same one?
Uh, no, that was May third.
Okay, so I'll get to May third in a moment.
They might have had doughnuts both times, so...
If I understood correctly, they couldn't see anything on the board that indicated it was a timed test?
Yes, they couldn't find it written anywhere.
Okay, so without...
No, they knew it was a timed test, but they couldn't find the start-stop times written down anywhere.
Well, eh, how did, how do you state they knew it was a timed test?
Uh, Mrs. McQuarter said she checked the session in the book, and it was a timed test.
So, in the book, it would have that session, it would delineate whether it's timed or untimed? What document would that be, ma'am?
That would be in the examiner's manual and the sample schedule.
Okay, and what was this test?
I...
It was the eighth grade communications arts session two?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and, and your belief is the examiner's manual says it's a timed test as opposed to an untimed test?
That's what Mrs. McQuarter said, yes.
Okay, did you look to see it?
I did look, yes.
And, and we have the examiner's manual, if you, if you could be so kind, is it one of yours, Betsy? A seven, I don't know if you could hear that or not, ma'am. And if you'd be so kind to, to find and show me whether that says it was timed or untimed.
Okay, that is not the correct document that has it in it. I'm not sure if that's in here or not, but there's a more detailed document that has it broken out by the particular gr- grade level and what the testing times are.
Well, well, administration has brought a charge, and there's a document out there that actually tells us conclusively whether it's timed or untimed?
Yes, they have that in the, they have that in their guidance office.
And is it true that if it's untimed, then we don't really have a problem in him be- in Sean being late? If it's untimed?
If it's untimed.
Okay, so it's untimed, that charge would be, it wouldn't be there, correct? If it's untimed, it's okay?
Yes.
All right, and there's a document out there that can conclusively tell us, and you think that document would be what?
Um, there's a detailed document for each grade levels testing that tells what the time is.
And does that have a title or something?
I would have to have my book and go through it and everything to find it, but...
Maybe someone can find that document.
Sure.
All right, May third, May third, is this the one where Janelle goes there? There's reference to say, in Janelle's statement and Sean's statement of how she's supposed to wait until he returns. Is that the May third one?
Uh, the May third one is where she goes to the testing room uh, to wait until Sean could come and start the testing. Uh, he got involved with the teacher and did not make it back in time, so Mrs. McQuarter came down and started the testing.
And, yeah, so, so Janelle said, and, and we have her statement, that she was supposed to wait until Sean got there, correct?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah, and Sean told you the same thing Janelle told you?
Yes.
And then, Ms. McQuarter, she came and unilaterally decided to go ahead and start the test?
Yes, because it was getting close to the, closer to the end of the, the class period, and she knew that the test needed to be started so students could take the test.
And that's fine, but if we wait another two minutes, or five minutes, or even ten, because I know the number and the amount and length of that test, we actually had fifteen minutes. So, if we waited another fifteen minutes and Sean arrives, we don't have a charge on that one either, do we?
Not if they were able to finish the test in the time period, I don't know that.
That's right, that's right. And so, do you know how long it was after Ms. McQuarter left? And Sean arrived?
No.
Okay, and do you know, uh, how many minute, what time it was Ms. McQuarter started that test?
Uh, no, I don't. I don't recall that anyway.
That, that's fair. Did you ever ask Sean, "Hey, what time did you get there, and did you have length of time to finish that test?"
I asked him for a statement several times, and it took me quite a long time to get a statement, so I did ask him for that.
Okay, well, what did Sean tell you as to whether he arrived shortly after McQuarter? He told you he did, right?
I would have to look at his original statement.
Feel, feel free to look.
I don't know where it is.
Oh, I think we're back to A twelve. I'm starting to get your exhibits memorized, Betsy. All right, that'll be, that'll be quicker and easier.
Okay, what was your question again? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. May third, what, if anything, does it say about, from Sean, as to when he arrived, as to that May third charge?
Are you asking about a specific time?
Yes, ma'am, because you've already told us that if he got there in time to finish the test, we wouldn't have that charge. But that Ms. McQuarter, unable to reach Sean, went ahead and started that test. So, what time does it say that Sean arrived, i- if it says?
I don't see a, a time, arrival time in here.
Well, what does he say, if anything, as to whether it was shortly after Ms. McQuarter left or not?
Ten minutes, it says on here, after. According to Mrs. Horton, Mrs. McQuarter left the classroom to help students in the guidance office. Approximately ten minutes later, I arrived.
Okay, and how much time did that leave, if you know, and could that test have been? And remember, I said earlier, fifteen.
Well, I'm not sure that this statement agrees with the other statements for this. We would have to go back and match that.
But as to Sean, he says, what, ten minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and do we know what time Ms. McQuarter started the test?
No, I do not.
And do we know whether Sean could have or could not have showed up, finished the test in a timely manner, and thus there'd be no charge? Can you tell the board that?
Well, I believe this one was referring more to, um, both Sean and Mrs. McQuarter.
That, that's fine, I just, on May third, ma'am, uh, if you can't tell us for sure whether he could have finished the test or not, that, that's fine, I'm just trying to find out.
I don't know that.
Okay, but we both agree that if he could have shown up, finished it, there'd be no charge on, on that one, right?
I don't know that. I can't answer that.
Uh, by the way, Ms. McQuarter, I guess she left an untrained person, uh, Janelle, to proctor the test?
That's correct.
Uh, the eighth grade, to your knowledge, has there been any ramification from, come down from Desi? Any finding as to these charges related to, uh, April sixteen, two thousand thirteen, and May third, two thousand thirteen?
No, they did not take any scores away for that.
Okay. Ma'am, E on here says, "On another occasion during the spring of two thousand thirteen MAP testing, Mr. Kirksey left an untrained proctor with his students during a testing period to take a phone call." Do you know what that's referring to?
Um, Mrs. Grogan, he told Mrs. Grogan before he went to the testing room that he was going to be receiving a phone call from a, I believe it was from a principal in another district or in another building, and that, uh, to come and get him when the phone call arrived, or come and give him a message, whichever. So, she went there to give him a message, and he asked her to stay in the, in the classroom while he went back and took the phone call.
Uh, one last thing, uh, if you look at A twelve, please. And we've already talked about your investigation a little bit. Uh, did you think there was any conflict in, in you as a district testing coordinator with your responsibilities that we've seen in, in the training coordinator's manual on slide twenty-seven? Did you think there was any conflict in your doing this investigation?
No.
Do you think the investigation should have been done by someone other than you so that it would include whether you upheld your responsibilities or not?
No, I believe it was my responsibility to investigate this because I went in originally to investigate a teacher cheating on the MAP test, and when you do an investigation, I've been told, it's like peeling an onion. As you begin to take away one layer at a time, you start to find things. And through this investigation, I found many things.
My point is, you're doing the investigation, let me ask this. Do you know of Mr. Minks? He was here earlier, he's from Desi.
Yes.
Yeah, and you understand that he's kind of in, uh, the big honcho in charge of the MAP here in the state?
I believe that he is one of the commissioners of the assessment section.
In looking at, uh, the training coordinator's manual, and specifically C seventy-nine and C eighty, and in interpreting also slide twenty-seven, would you defer to Mr. Minks' interpretation of those responsibilities that you would have as a district testing coordinator, as opposed to your own interpretation?
On what page? I'm sorry.
Oh, the training coordinator's manual, C seventy-nine and C eighty lists...
The testing coordinator's manual?
The testing, yes. Ma'am, uh, on A twelve, if you would turn there, please.
Okay.
All right, and if you turn to, I think it's C two-ten.
C what?
Two-ten. That is Mr. Kirksey's statement. Do you see that?
Yes.
And I think you said earlier, it, it was thirty to forty minutes that you met with him, would that be, uh... Well, that was about the May twenty-second. How, how long do you think you met with him on May third?
On May third, that's a statement.
Okay. And you, you say something about, Mr. Kirksey says, he asked Mrs. Horton, I'm sorry, we're understatement on that page, and it starts with "on May third." Is everybody there? On May three? Then it says, "On May three, Mr. Kirksey was delayed from getting to the testing room as he was following up on allegations concerning..." Do you see that sentence?
Yes.
And it says, "He asked Mrs. Horton to go to the testing room, pass out doughnuts, and wait for him to arrive to begin testing." Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, now, i- if you'll turn to two-twelve and Mrs. Horton, and if you look at the bottom paragraph, this is Mrs. Horton's statement, right?
Yes.
And she says, "On May third, Mr. Kirksey asked Mrs. Horton to take doughnuts to the testing room and let the kids eat until he got there to start testing." Do you see that?
Yes.
And, and that's consistent with what, uh, Sean said, that we just went through a moment ago, correct?
Part of it, yes.
Okay, well, what, what, what part do you, is inconsistent that you believe is inconsistent? Take your time and read what Sean said, and read what Mrs. Horton said. They're consistent, right? Or at least pretty darn close.
Yeah, they just don't have all of the stuff in them, yeah.
Well, I guess my question is, is, you know, you put a little parenthetical there, this conflicts with Ms. Sappington. Is there some reason you didn't say that Janelle's statement and Sean's are consistent? In other words, this is consistent with the other person who would have the most direct knowledge, Ms. Horton?
I, no, I don't have a reason for that. That was just for clarification, for me to find, to try to determine when there was a conflict in the report.
Okay, so you weren't trying to point out consistencies, you were just trying to point out conflicts and inconsistencies?
Yes, so I could, in case I needed to do any further investigation.
Well, and let's talk about inconsistencies for a moment. If you'll turn to Ms. Sappington, her statement is on two-twenty-five.
Uh, the conflict in Mrs. Sappington's statement was on the date.
Well, there's a little more than that, maybe. Two-twenty-five. Well, that's no bother. Do y'all not have two-twenty-five? A fifteen. Thank you, Ms. Betsy.
This report is just a listing of all of the statements and the interviews that came from that in here. It's not a, a summary of what happened. It's, it's a listing of everything that took place.
Okay, thank you. If you would look at A fifteen, please. Now, A fif- Now, A 15, you have Ms. Sappington saying, and I guess he is.
I don't have Ms. Sappington saying anything. This is her statement.
Listen to this. What is the conflict? Point us out the sentence in Ms. Sappington's statement that you're saying is a conflict related, hey, wait for me, give him some donuts.
She says, "I believe the date the incident happened was Thursday 5/13." And all of the other statements said 5/313. There may the, may the 3rd 13. So that's why I said Mrs. Sappington's statement conflicted, because it wasn't on the, she didn't give it as the same date.
Okay. Well, you put that right after the sentence about donuts and waiting to take the test. Okay. Was there some reason you put it after that sentence instead of the date?
No.
Okay. Oh, and if you would, while you're on A 12, turn next to 215.
215?
Yes, ma'am, please. And I'm going to specifically point your attention to Ms. Sappington's statement, and that's what we're talking about at the top of the page, at least, please. Correct? Feel free to look at the page before. Is that Ms. Sappington's statement?
Yes.
And then when you get to the very end of her statement on C 215, you have a sentence there, "To Ms. Sappington's observation, Ms. Horton was in the classroom the entire testing period. However, she was away from the door for a small period of time." Do you see that?
Yes.
And now, if you turn back to Ms. Sappington's statement one more time.
The.
Her actual written statement, which is 15.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there's a, there's another sentence, or some more words, after that sentence, correct? It's the last sentence on A 15.
Mm-hmm.
She says, "In addition to what you chose to write on the report," she says, "For a small amount of time, I was away from the door, so I can't verify she was alone the entire time in the room." Do you see that?
Correct, yes.
Why'd you leave that sentence out?
I didn't leave it out. One's an interview, and one's, I interviewed her, and one's a statement. And I was just putting that there. I mean, I pretty much discounted Mrs. Sappington's interview anyway because it was a wrong date.
Okay.
Let's try to keep this real basic. At any time during the time that Mr. Kirksey was proctoring exams, was an untrained aide proctoring that exam?
Yes.
And that happened on several occasions.
Three times.
And that's a violation of DESI protocols. It's a violation of policy ILA. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We seem to have forgotten about that. Mr. Kirksey talked about untimed tests under MAP. I look at the, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but when I look at C 13, Exhibit A 7, it looks to me like they're timed. Are they strictly timed?
This, the problem is, this is the Grade 7 Examiner's Manual, and we need the Grade 8 Examiner's Manual.
Are you aware of any untimed, open to take as much time as you want to take a MAP exam?
No, they're timing guidelines. Yes.
The other thing that seems to be simple and uncontested is, Mr. Kirksey has admitted to you that he was proctoring exams during the MAP testing period on at least several occasions?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that a violation of policy ILA?
Yes, it is.
Judge, objection. That's not part of the charges, Mr. McDormand. That's not part of the charges before the board.
Well, I think, I think that it is. I think it, and I think it shows a course of conduct, a violation, ignoring.
It's beyond the scope of the pleadings, which here is a charge, and that's not something he's been charged with.
It shows a course of conduct and a disregard of policy ILA, which he has admitted to violating in several respects.
I took, I took 5A to be inclusive of the charges themselves, causing the alleged charge of 5A. But I have to know which ones they're talking about before I can address it, and that's not in the chart.
There certainly is a way. He asked to clarify and asked to put additional language into the charges, which we agreed to and which you agreed to. So if there was a question about what something meant, it was certainly within Mr. Kirksey's prerogative to do that, and he didn't. And if you're violating the test, your board policies, which you agree in your contract to apply, it's not serving as a leader. There's also a question about the test schedule showing sixty minutes, and so that had to be wrong. Recall some question about that? So that you should have keyed somebody to know this was a two-day event. You remember that?
Yes, that would not have given me the other information.
No, because what does the test manual tell you that the timing is for that in A 7?
I believe it is in Session 2.
Yes.
Sixty to ninety minutes.
Sixty to ninety minutes. So if it was only down for sixty, it don't tell you anything. And last, we seem to like to beat this harse a lot, but we'll do it again. This is Exhibit, no, it's Exhibit 27. What did I do with that damn thing? Slide 27. Does Slide 27 require you to do, review anything other than the district's assessment plan?
No, it doesn't.
And the assessment plan, as you testified, covers one hundred to one hundred and twenty different tests.
Yes. It is posted on our website.
And after, it just says you should do that before you administer the MAP test. It doesn't say you have to review schedules.
No.
And then it says, later on, we get into this question of who you is. "The timing of the assessments has changed due to the return of the performance events. Please keep this in mind when you are scheduling tests." And this refers to the district's total assessment plan. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
All right, that's fine. I have nothing further.
Ma'am, as the district testing coordinator, did I say it right that time?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Are you going to continue a practice of not reading the schedules to see if they're DESI compliant in the future?
No, I would put that in as a recommendation that we do that.
Well, why would that be?
I would ask the board to change that.
Yeah, why would that be a recommendation?
Because there is the ability of some people to take over jobs that they're not supposed to do and make it so that we have problems in our district. I don't ever want to see anything like this happen again.
Is that the only reason you'd make it a recommendation?
What other reason would I have?
What's the problem with assumptions of those below that you're reading what you receive, which seems fairly reasonable? What's the problem with making that assumption?
I can't tell what people's assumptions are. I would have no clue.
That's all.
There'll be more than that. But I have, we're now at a sequence of several sharp witnesses.
As our next witness, we're going to call Ms. Ginger Martin.
My name is Ginger Martin.
Ms. Martin, how long have you been employed by the Camden Town School District?
This starts my seventeenth year.
And what role do you currently serve with the district?
I'm secretary to Mrs. France.
And how long have you served in that role?
Pardon me?
How long have you been Miss France's secretary?
Seventeen years.
So the whole time you've been here at the district, you've worked with Miss France? I'm sure you do many duties for Miss France. So he's saying, say yes or no into the mic instead of nodding, just so the court reporter can hear. So the whole time you've been here, you've been working with Mrs. France. Is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And I'm sure you do many duties for Mrs. France, but we're going to talk just specifically about your role in MAP testing.
Okay.
Do you have any involvement in the MAP testing process?
Yes, I do.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I get the building counts from each building for grades three through eight. I order the books. I do the purchase order. I check the books when they come in. I make sure they're distributed out to the buildings. When the testing is finished, I put in the orders for the test to be delivered back to our room where we check them in. Then I box them up, and I notify DESI that we're ready for pickup.
Okay. And let's talk specifically about your involvement this year, 2013 Spring MAP testing. I'm going to direct you, there's a book in front of you, and that's the Administration's Exhibits. If you can turn to Tab A 29, please.
To what?
Please turn to Tab A 29. And can you please describe for the board what that is? You can take a minute to look at it.
Okay, this is a map, an email that I sent out to the middle school testing coordinator that I needed her MAP test schedule as soon as possible. That was sent out on April the 3rd.
And can you read exactly who it was sent to?
It was sent to Becky Long Ruggles, Pat McQuarter, and Sean Kirksey.
Why did you send that email? Why did you send that email?
Why did I send the email?
What was the purpose behind sending the email?
Because the, the schedule was supposed to be turned in on April, I mean, on March 21st.
So you needed the schedule?
Yes, I needed it right away.
Did you get a response to your email?
My first response that I got came from Pat McQuarter, and she said she thought that the test had already, the schedule had already been turned in, and that she would talk to Becky about it the next morning.
Did you ultimately get something from Becky?
Yes, I did.
If you could turn to the next tab, it's A 30. Is that the fax she received from Becky?
That's the fax I received from Becky.
And behind it is the schedules from Becky for the Camden Town Middle School? Is that what was attached to Becky's fax?
Yes, there was.
Then did you, later in the day, did you also get a response to your email from Sean Kirksey?
I don't believe I did that day. Yes, I did. Later, later that day, I did. But, yes.
Could you please turn to Tab A 31? Do you recognize that as the response you got from Mr. Kirksey?
Yes.
And turn the next page, please. Is that the schedule you received from Mr. Kirksey?
That's the one that he sent me, yes.
Okay. And then, you're going to help us out with something. If you could turn to A 32, please. We've been talking a lot today, I know you haven't been in the room, about this schedule, A 32. Can you please identify for us what this is?
This is the form that I use to type all the building schedules on after I receive them, so that we have them in a uniform manner.
Just so I understand, so when you get the schedule from every building that does MAP testing, you put it in this format?
That's right.
And then what do you do with this form?
We file it in case DESI wants it.
So you keep it in your office in case DESI wants it?
That's correct.
So the purpose of this form was to put all schedules into one similar format?
In one format.
Okay. If you can look back at A 30. The daily schedules of the building. Specifically look at Page 297. And then look at Page 298. Is this the document you used to create your form schedule that we were just looking at?
Yes.
So when you saw this normal schedule on Page 298, what, what was your understanding of that?
That it was the normal daily schedule, that it was not a test schedule.
And did you assume that because every other page had the exact breakout of what they'd be doing?
That's correct.
So when you created your form on Exhibit A 32, can you explain for us why there is no, it appears there's going to be no testing on April 17th for the seventh grade Communication Arts. Why is that?
Because it said normal schedule, so I didn't think they would be testing that day.
Did DESI request your schedules this year?
No.
Thank you.
You are going to win the shortest witness award. That's a good award to win.
I'm sorry. I have a little bit of a hearing problem.
So do I sometimes. We're going to be short. You're going to win the shortest witness award. You're not going to be up here very long.
Okay.
Ms. Martin, what is your position again?
I am secretary to Roma France.
And you created the form that has the three sessions?
Yes. I didn't, I did not actually create it. It was a form that DESI had used in the past.
Right, I understand. And you did the best you could with the information that you understood and your position in filling out that form. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. You didn't go back to Becky or someone else and ask questions?
No.
And then, also, ma'am, if we could go through for just a moment, you said something a moment ago about, that you also had a response from Pat McQuarter. It's actually C 157, folks, and I don't know if we even need to turn to it, but may I join you here? Pat McQuarter, when you sent the email here saying, "Hey, folk, you know, give me the MAP testing," she wrote back, "I thought Becky already sent that to you. I'll ask her about it in the morning." Do you see that, ma'am?
Yes.
All right. Do you remember that response?
I do.
All right. And then, from there, we go to, would you put that back in here, please, Sean? Real quickly, do you still have that booklet? Good. So A 29, we have the communications we see on A 29, and then on A 30, do you remember receiving this fax on A 30, ma'am, from the training, from the testing coordinator? You'll need to respond audibly.
Yes.
All right. And did you know enough about the Training Coordinator's Manual and the background to know that the testing coordinator is supposed to send the schedules to the district testing coordinator prior to testing? Did you know that? If not, that's fine.
No, uh, I did not.
You just knew that the person who was the school testing coordinator had sent you the schedule?
Correct.
And then, do you remember a discussion, ma'am, with, with Sean? And I think Joel was on the phone too, about that schedule that the train, that Becky had sent you and faxed to you? Remember that discussion?
Do I remember what?
Yeah, after you got this fax from Becky?
Yes.
Do you remember having a phone call, and, and Joel Carey, do you know who Joel Carey is?
Yes.
And then Sean, of course, you've known Sean a little while.
Right.
Do you remember them being on the phone with you about Becky's fax to Roma France?
No, I don't.
Okay. Do you remember a phone call at all during that time period where you talked to them about what eventually became the, the form that Sean sent you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Do you deny having a phone call with them during that time period, or just don't recall one way or the other?
I don't remember having a phone call.
That's fair. That's all.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh, may I ask one more question, Mr. McDorman? Ms. Martin? Hold on, Ms. Martin. Hey, did you know that, that, that Roma was not reading the, the schedules as they were being sent to her office? Did you know that?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay. Nothing further. No, Ms. Martin does not need to stay. Ms. Martin, thank you for your time.
You are released.
All right, thank you.
Janelle Horton?
Break your right hand, please. You're about to be able to be the truth. You have the truth of your doubt. You have the truth of your doubt. You have the truth of your doubt.
Yes.
Please be seated and say your name.
Janelle Horton.
Hi, Ms. Horton. Are you currently employed by the Camden Town School District?
Yes.
And what's your role?
Um, secretary for the middle school.
So, are you Sean Kirksey's assistant?
Yes.
And how long have you been in that role?
Since two thousand seven.
Let's just jump right in and talk directly about the map testing at the Camden Town School District, the middle school. Do you have any role or play any part in map test administration or with the schedules?
No.
Do you have any role in creating the schedule?
No.
I'm going to ask you to turn, there's a booklet in front of you. If you could turn to exhibit A twenty-eight, can you please identify this for the board?
That is an email that I sent with all the map schedules attached to it, to the faculty.
So, behind your email are the schedules that you sent out to all of the faculty?
Yes.
All the faculty in the middle school?
Yes.
Okay. And these schedules that we're looking at, they're broken up by day for the middle school. Who created those schedules?
Mr. Kirksey.
Objection, speculation, unless she has a foundation of having been part of the meetings. Objection, lack of foundation, speculation.
I'll lay a foundation. Do you know how, what's the basis of your knowledge that Mr. Kirksey created those schedules?
Because they-
Same objection, speculation, foundation.
Please go ahead.
Because they were typed on my desktop by Mr. Kirksey.
Tell us a little bit more about that. What do you remember exactly?
I just sat down to help type them and change the dates, and he just said, hey, it would be easier for me to do it myself. So, he sat down and then we just sent them from my computer, from my desktop, just through the email.
Have you ever been trained as a map test administrator?
No.
But this year, in the spring of two thousand thirteen, were you called upon to actually proctor or monitor students while they took the map test?
Yes.
Okay. Do you remember the first time that that happened?
Yes.
Okay. Do you even remember the date specifically?
I think it was April sixteenth.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about what you recall about that day?
I was just called and asked to come to the room to watch the testing. Mr. Kirksey had something to do, and I went to the room, they were already testing, it was quiet. The only reason I had to call anyone is a student asked me a question, he asked me to define a word. So, I went to the phone and called the guidance office, and I said, hey, can I define a word for this kid? And she said, no, don't, don't say anything else, I'll be right down. So, Pat McWhorter came down and talked to the kid, answered a few questions, and then she said, do you have a timer? And I said, no. And she said, well, can you look for a start time? And we looked on the desk, looked on the board, there wasn't a start time. She asked me to call Mr. Kirksey, we tried and didn't get an answer, and she sent me back to the office.
Okay, so let's back up a little bit. It's the sixteenth, Mr. Kirksey called you? You're sitting at your desk, did he call you?
I was sitting next to Thalia Jeffrey's desk in the front office.
And he called you, did he ask you to go to the room, or did he ask you to find someone to go to the room?
He asked me to come to the room.
And when you got to the room, were the students already testing?
Yes.
And the students tested the whole time you were in the room?
Yes, Mrs. McWhorter sent me back as soon as she got there.
Okay. Were you also called upon on another occasion to come down and, and watch some map testing?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us what you recall about that?
Um, that was the day that he was dealing with an issue, and just said, hey, can you go get my map test and take them down to the room and get them started? Because they were eating donuts and just hanging out.
And, and then what happened?
Um, I went down to the room, let them eat the donuts, they were just kind of sitting and visiting, and I had been down there for a while, so I called the guidance office and said, hey, you want me to send them somewhere? Is somebody going to come down here? What are we doing with them? So, Pat came down, Pat McWhorter came down. She read the instructions to the students, and then she left. And I just sat there till Mr. Kirksey came back and collected the books.
Can you please turn to exhibit A eighteen in the booklet before you? Do you recognize that document as a statement that you wrote?
Yes.
And is that an accurate statement of what happened with regards to map testing this year?
Yes.
I don't have anything further.
Janelle, I, my name's Jay, and I just have a few questions, okay? Hey, uh, is that May third whenever the kids were going to be fed some donuts or basically past time?
Yes.
And do you know how long you'd been in the room whenever you made the phone call and Ms. McWhorter joined?
I don't, I, I don't know, in minutes.
Did, and, and, I'm sorry?
I don't know.
Okay, that's fair. Uh, do you know, uh, how long Ms. McWhorter stayed in the room?
Um, she stayed long enough to hand out the booklets and she read the instructions and just answered a couple of questions, and she was in there just for a few minutes and then left.
Do you know how long it was after Ms. McWhorter left that, that Sean arrived?
Um, I really don't know the minutes, but he was in time to, he, he got there before they finished because he collected the books.
Okay. But as far as it being five minutes after she left, or just a couple of minutes, or ten minutes? I mean, can you give us some idea of how long?
Maybe ten minutes, I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. Now, uh, do you know whether that was a timed or an untimed session on May third?
On May thir, I know, I know.
One way or the other? All right, let's go back to the April sixteenth, okay? April sixteenth, you said something about Pat started a test.
No, she asked, she answered a quest, it's the Communication Arts test.
Okay.
She answered a student's question, and she asked me, where's the timer?
Gotcha, and y'all couldn't find the timer?
Right.
Okay. Do you know if it's an untimed test, do you know whether there's a timer or not?
I don't know that the test was timed. I only saw the book one time when I
Sure.
was going to define the word for the kid.
Do you know whether it was session two, session three, or what session it was? Okay. That's fair enough. And then, lastly, uh, if I understand, you, you told us that, that Sean, did he, well, let's do it this way in sequence. You sent out an email, and there was a, a, a meeting of the, the building leadership team, is that right?
I'm sorry?
Do you remember the email that you sent out, uh, that put the building leadership team committee together to talk about a number of things, including the map schedules?
I don't, I don't remember.
That's fair.
I mean, I probably did, I don't remember.
That's okay. Uh, and then, you said something about Sean, what, Sean was typing what?
The schedules. I sat down to just change the dates and stuff, and it was just easier for him to, not to try to explain everything to me, and he just sat down and typed it on my desktop.
All right. Now, when he typed those, do you know if that was before or after the, the meeting of the, of the building leadership team? Do you have a memory?
I don't.
When you typed those, do you know whether it was or was not inclusive of the input of Becky and the different members of the building leadership team?
I don't.
You just know that he typed information into a form?
Yes.
As far as who created the substance of that information, you don't know one way or the other?
No.
That's all. Possibly, uh, I have, I'm sorry, Janelle, but possibly because I anticipate Ms. McWhorter's going to be a witness potentially. So, possibly, yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is Karen K. Grogan.
Ms. Grogan, are you currently employed by the Camden Town School District?
Yes, I am.
And where do you work?
I work in Camden Middle School.
And what do you do there?
I am the building secretary.
Are you familiar with map testing?
Hmm, not really.
Have you ever been trained in map test administration?
No.
Were you called upon this year in the spring of two thousand thirteen to sit in with some students during map testing?
Yes, I was.
Can you tell us what you remember about that?
Um, Mr. Kirksey had asked me to come and get him from the testing room when a phone call came in. The phone call came in, I went down to the room, um, and he asked me to stay there in the room while he went and took the phone call.
Uh, so, were the students testing when you came into the room?
Yes.
And were they testing by the time you left the room?
Yes, they were still testing.
Do you remember when this was?
Uh, I believe it was the first session of map testing, so it would have been mid-April. I don't recall the exact date.
So, you were in the room watching the students while they were testing?
Yes.
Okay. Could you please turn in the book in front of you? There's a tab A twenty-four. Can you just identify that document for the district?
Yes, that is my statement.
And is it accurate to the best of your recollection?
Yes, it is.
Nothing further.
Ms. Grogan, you're now the new recipient of the shortest witness. That's good.
I'm sorry?
You're now the shortest witness. Hey, uh, how long was Sean gone, do you know, ma'am?
Approximately five to eight minutes.
All right. And, and do you know what that phone call was about?
I, I want to say it was a principal from another building, but I, I can't be certain of that.
And do you know how emergent or not emergent the situation was, or did you know anything about it?
I do not, no.
All right. You have a good day, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir, on our behalf.
Thank you very much.
When we reconvene, I'm going to ask you to stand, and I will swear you in.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. Please, please take your seat, we're ready to reconvene.
Sherry Rickerson.
Ms. Rickerson, are you here today because you were subpoenaed by the parties and are therefore required to be here?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. What's your current position with the Camden Town School District?
Uh, I'm a seventh grade math teacher, I'm the head of the math department for Camden Middle School.
You're the head of the math department?
Yes, I am.
How many years have you been in education total?
Uh, thirty-four years, this is my thirty-fifth year.
Are you on the middle school's building leadership team?
Yes, I am.
And what do you do as a part of the building leadership team?
Uh, we set policies for the building, make sure things run smoothly, and then things are presented to the faculty to make sure that people agree with what the board, we've come up with.
Do, do you recall a conversation this spring, so spring two thousand thirteen, about the map test and the scheduling of the map test?
Yes.
Can you tell us, um, where, where do you recall this conversation taking place?
I can't tell you if for sure if it was going to, it was in the BLT or if it was in the actual training session, but I think it occurred in both locations, it was brought up.
And where, where were you? Were you in the library for that, or?
We were in the library, in the libraries, when we were.
So, what specifically do you recall being said about the scheduling for the map test this year?
What was said specifically was that, uh, Mr. Kirksey presented the idea of splitting the Language Arts test, and was asking, and it was either BLT or it was actually in the training session, what did people think about that? And what occurred was, I did not feel good about this, and so I asked the question, what if Desi does not has a problem with this? And what was said was, well, we could lose scores, that was one thing said.
Who said that, do you remember?
Mr. Kirksey said that to me. And then, after that, Mr. Kirksey made the statement, and, and it was, I can't give you the exact words, but it was basically, I'll take the heat. Because when I looked in the room, everyone had concerns on their faces. You, I can tell you exactly where everyone was sitting in the room, I can tell you where they were in the library, and people were, you could see the concern on people's faces. Mr. Kirksey is a, an advocate for our children, and he was wanting to do something for the students. And I don't think anyone wanted to go against him. I think people just were kind of in shock at first. And he asked us if we, after he finally got people to say they were going to- And he asked us if we, after he finally got people to say they were going to agree with this, he said, can you, he made the statement, can you live with this? And people were kind of non-committal, but people did not want to go against Mr. Kirksey. Our faculty liked Mr. Kirksey.
We're going to switch gears just a little bit. This spring, did you have the opportunity to witness Janelle Horton sitting in with students while they were MAP testing?
Yes, I did.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
It was on one of the days, it was toward the end of testing in the math, I think in the math area. And what occurred was, I happened, I wanted to give a receipt to Janelle and I went toward the office and the office said that she was not at the office. And so they said she was down in Ms. Sappington's room. So I went down to Ms. Sappington's room and when I walked in, I gave the receipt to Janelle and as I was walking out, there were two students who were talking during the MAP test. And I said to the two boys, I said, you cannot talk during the MAP test because there are a couple of people not finished. It was right at the end of the testing period. And then I just left.
But Ms. Horton was in the room alone with the students?
Yes, Ms. Horton was in the room.
Did that concern you?
I think what concerned me probably, I didn't think about that at the time. What concerned me was that the two students were talking. Because you're supposed to report improprieties when students are talking. If I'd had two students talking in my classroom, I would have turned that in immediately and then judgment would have had to been made about, are you going to count these scores? So that's what I was thinking. I was not thinking in terms of that Janelle was in there. I was thinking in terms of the students were talking and someone said to me at a vertical team, they said, you need to turn this in, Sherry. If you don't turn this in, this can come back on to you. And my comment to that was, well, other people know about this. This is not like people did not know about this. But what I did was, I, when I came back, I came back to teach for the Swift Foundation and I went back from a vertical team meeting, came back, taught, went back and reported to Becky Longruggles what I had seen.
Did you talk to Sean Kirksey about it?
I talked to Sean later. Sean, someone had called me at the vertical team meeting and normally people do not call me, so I just assumed it was the office. Because as soon as I walked in the building, back, I went back to the vertical team meeting. I came back to the school, always come back, and Mr. Kirksey motioned me and he said, can I talk to you for a minute? And I said, yes. So we went into his office and Mr. Kirksey first told me about what had happened with Heather Bell. That was the first thing, because I was department chair and I had not heard. I'd heard at the vertical team meeting, teachers were telling me about what had happened and I had not heard as the department chair. So he was telling me about that and then he proceeded to tell me, he said, well, he said, the reason I wasn't in the room where Janelle was, it was because I was trying to make a decision what to do about Heather Bell and her still testing.
Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead. You were talking to Mr. Kirksey. Please continue.
And Mr. Kirksey said, he told me that the reason he was not in the classroom with the students was because he was dealing with a teacher where there was a situation and he had to make a decision whether that teacher should be testing still. Because at that point, there were only allegations that were being made.
So he was trying to explain to you why he wasn't in the room?
Yes.
Okay, nothing else? Thank you.
Good day, ma'am. Hey, let's talk about May 3rd first. Did I understand and maybe I heard incorrectly that you're telling us that Sean started the test on May 3rd?
I was, Sean told me that he had started it. Because when I walked in, I only saw Janelle at the end. But I was under the impression, he told me that he had started the test and that Janelle was just taking over because he was trying to deal with the situation.
And is this the same day that you saw Pat in there? Pat McQuarter?
Pat McQuarter was, no. Pat McQuarter was not there at all. Janelle was there by herself. I did not even see Pat at all during that day.
And are you sure Sean told you he started the test?
Sean said that when he was talking to me individually in his office after school.
Well, the test had been started and you remember him telling you about that there was some situation that called him out of the room?
Yes, he said there's, he was concerned about the teacher, whether she should test or not.
Yeah. And without going through the specifics, ma'am, I'm guessing you know kind of the outline enough.
Right.
Is it fair to say that was a serious situation?
Yes, it was a very serious situation.
And is it fair to say that that situation had some immediacy to it as far as addressing it?
I accepted exactly what he had told me, that it was something that needed to be dealt with immediately. Decision had to be made.
And knowing the content, once he told you the situation, did you kind of understand the immediacy of it and his stepping out of the room?
I took Mr. Kirksey's word for it. He's never been dishonest with me prior, so I just took his word for this was the case. I just believed him.
Okay. Ma'am, next, hold on just a second. So you didn't see Pat McQuarter that day and you don't know, I guess, for sure whether?
I did not see Pat McQuarter at all that day, even down the hall in our area at all that day.
Have you talked to Janelle about that day?
No, I did not talk to Janelle about that day. I just, it was, I didn't think it was my business. I reported what I should have reported, period.
Fair enough, fair enough. But this would be May 3rd, right?
Yes, because it may third is what I had written on the statement that they had me write.
Okay. And we have statements of Pat McQuarter and others as to who started the test. It's the reason I asked to confirm May 3rd. Okay. Now, let's talk a moment ago. You've been on the BLT committee for how long, ma'am?
Two years.
Two years. Is there some experience and knowledge on that committee?
I think, yes, there is.
Yeah, and you've been with the school district how long, ma'am?
Fourteen years.
Okay.
This is my 15th.
Do you remember there being instances where communications art had been a split session before 2013? And specifically as recent as 2010? Do you remember that?
I do not. And I think the reason I don't remember that is because a lot of times we were just given a schedule and if you had a problem with the schedule, they would say something. I would have thought that it was probably, they would have spoke to the communication arts department since this was the part that was being split. The math one was not like that. Ours is not split apart.
Okay. And you've met with Betsy how many times in preparation for today?
I have not met with Betsy. I've talked to her on the phone twice, I believe.
Okay. And as to the committee, do you remember any documents being brought by Becky? You know who Becky Longruggles is?
Yes.
Do you remember her bringing any documents to the meeting in 2012? To the BLT committing, meeting about schedules? Do you remember her bringing any documents with her in 2012?
I do not remember that. She usually brings something to every meeting, but I did not, I did not see what she had brought.
Do you remember whether she brought, do you remember her bringing any documents with her to the 2013 meeting that the BLT had about MAP schedules?
No, I do not remember that.
Now, is it a fair statement, and just tell me the best of your recollection, is it a fair statement that some folks talked about how historically there had been split sessions of COM Arts at this BLT meeting?
I don't know that it was historic, historical, because Mr. Ray did not split sessions. And I, and I really, being a math person, I did not pay attention to that. I really was focusing, I'm giving the MAP test and that is the test that I'm, that I'm responsible for and I paid attention to that.
That's fair. So as to whether there were discussions by those in the committee in 13 as to prior split sessions of COM Arts, as you just told us, you weren't really paying attention since it was COM Arts. Is that fair?
Well, I don't, do not recall anyone stating that in the meeting. I do believe that Mr. Kirksey made the statement that this had been done previously.
Okay. And do you remember some folks confirming that?
I would, I would think, let me think about this. I think that Nancy Groves confirmed it, that it happened prior.
All right, who else?
People weren't sure of the year.
Yeah, who else confirmed it besides Nancy Groves?
Well, probably would have just been Nancy Groves, because Nancy Groves was on, it was the BLT. She was the only one that's on that department that would have been there.
Okay, so Nancy Groves is part of COM Arts, is that right?
Yes, she's the department chair.
And did Nancy confirm how many times that there'd been split sessions prior to 2013?
No, the only comment that she had made to me was that we hadn't had to worry about anything like that because we did not have that test given.
Yeah, the COM Arts split.
The split one.
Now, in addition, do you remember there being discussion about how the schedules, it was believed that they were going to be sent to the district testing coordinator? Do you remember that being discussed or do you have a memory one way or the other?
I don't remember one way or the other that it was even discussed about that.
That's fair. Do you remember there being discussion of some of the folks of how it was believed that the DTC submitted and sent those schedules on to Desi? Do you remember that or not have a rec?
I remember, I don't know if it was in a closed session with Mr. Kirksey or it was then, but I do remember something being said about sending it on, that the schedule was to be approved.
Okay. And when you say sending it on, and you're telling me to the best of your recollection, which I appreciate, we're talking about the DTC sending it on to Desi, is that right?
Right.
Okay. And so, and so in the context of this was other split sessions had occurred, been submitted to the DTC and had been sent on, like you just said, to Desi. So they'd gone all the way to Desi is what folks believed at least. Is that a fair statement, ma'am?
I do not know that people believed it. I would not have asked the question about the legality of it.
Sure.
If I had thought it was okay.
Sure.
So I can't answer for the other people. I can only answer for myself that I was very unsure about this.
And that's because I asked a bad question. Other folks expressed it there. Is that better?
I think other people did express, yes.
Okay. So other folks expressed it. And so some of them talk about that and then some of them talk about, hey, I have some concerns. I mean, as you're sitting here today, I mean, are you telling us that you allowed a test to occur knowingly, knowing and believing that it violated Desi? Or did you just kind of have some questions because of the, how the content of the discussion went?
I'm a rule follower and so for me, flags went up and I taught in a different state where you cannot make, you cannot make any changes in protocol of testing. And I knew that this was something that was testing. I guess I think in terms of, I cannot be someone else's conscience.
Yeah, and I understand. But I mean, gosh, you would not be, if you believed there was a violation there, you would have said something if you were certain about it or believed it. Isn't that a fair statement?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay.
The problem is, is that people like Mr. Kirksey very much and no one wanted to go against Mr. Kirksey, period. We like him very much and he is for the student. That's, that is the thing. And people did not really acknowledge one way or the other. You could see people kind of shrugging when he asked if people, what they thought about this.
These other folks who you've told us expressed the statements about how it went to the district training coordinator and sent on up. Do you remember anything else that those others folks who were part of the BLT said related to, hey, this has been done in the past? Or anything else you recall those other folks saying?
I do not think that there was a lot of statements made at the time. I think people were just so surprised and I think they didn't know what to say. And I think they just, people just did not take a stand.
Well, and a moment ago, you said, I don't know what other people believed, so be fair to me, okay? So, and these other folks that expressed though, there were, it is true that there were some folks that thought, or at least expressed, like we said, it's been done in the past, gone to DTC and gone on up the line. Okay. So Sean wasn't the only one talking about that, right? Did you think the DTC, did you know the DTC received those schedules?
No, I did not know that they received them. It does not say that in our handbook. We read, we have a manual for us that, and what we do is we read, we read the mathematics or you read the communication arts.
Did you know who the testing coordinator was?
Well, I assumed that the testing coordinator was Becky Longruggles in our building and Pat McQuarter. And then if you go further up, would have been Roma France, is what I would have thought.
And the schedule, did you understand or believe it went through those people up to Roma France? What was your understanding or belief?
I just assumed that it would, that did.
That's all. Thank you, ma'am. She may be excused and so we will not have the rule as to her in our assessment.
Thank you. I'm Solen Barber, treasurer of the school board. Did I hear correctly that you said something about in talking with Mr. Kirksey among your testimony, a closed session versus talking with your building leader team?
Yes, you talked to me in private.
In private and closed, where it was just the two of you?
Just the two of us, yes.
Did you need to elaborate on that? I was kind of, I'm kind of surprised if you are the departmental head that you may not have known before other people did of teachers, what was going on in your own building?
I just think things happened so quickly in our building with what occurred with the testing protocols. It happened so quickly that I do not believe that he had time to even tell me. I mean, things around here has kind of spread very rapidly in our community and I found out about it at a vertical team meeting. And I was in shock when I found out about it. But he did, as soon as I returned, he did tell me about it and told me what was going on.
And, and closed session?
Yes, in closed session, yes.
Any follow-up in response to her question? Jay?
I just, I'm not sure I understand what closed session means as far as you're talking about it, ma'am.
Well, I'm assuming that closed session means that I went into his office. He pulled me into his office and shut the door and told me. I would, I would consider that closed session. And that's what I'm assuming you were asking. Am I correct? Okay.
So if I'm understanding, it was a personnel matter that was sensitive and immediate and instead of talking out in public, you came into his office?
No, he went to, he asked me to come to the office and he told me what was going. He thought I should know because I was department chair.
That helps. Thank you. Thank you and you are excused. You're free to go. You can remain or you can go home.
Next, we'd like to call Ms. Amy Larrington.
Amy Larrington.
Hi, Ms. Larrington. Are you here today because you were subpoenaed by both parties and therefore required to be here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Can you please tell us, are you currently employed by the Camdenton School District?
Yes, I am.
And what's your current position with the district?
I'm an eighth grade science teacher.
At the middle school?
At the middle school.
Are you on the building leadership team?
Yes, I am.
And how long have you been on the BLT?
I believe I've held that position for five years.
I'm going to draw your attention to this year's BLT meeting. I believe it was held in March of 2013. Do you recall that meeting?
Yes, I do.
And specifically, we're going to talk about, do you recall discussions regarding MAP scheduling at that meeting?
Yes, I do.
Can you tell us, what do you remember about that conversation?
The schedule was presented to the committee.
And your last name is Larrington?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Larrington. My name's Jay and I just have a few. You said there was a schedule that was brought. We've gone through this before. Do you remember it being the preliminary or the rough draft of a schedule? It was kind of vague.
It was a preliminary schedule before the decision was made.
That saves you and I having to look at some documents. And on that preliminary, that preliminary, it has on the second page and it's C-352, seventh grade COM Arts, session two, two days normal schedule. Do you see that?
Yes.
All right. Now, there's already been some testimony, but do you remember that part of that discussion? And by the way, the BLT, they sometimes have open and frank discussions of the pluses and minuses about things. Is that a fair statement?
That is true. That is true.
And, and everybody kind of states their say and then decisions are made?
That is correct.
Now, do you remember, and let me kind of refresh your recollection, do you remember one of the topics being discussed as to, well, you know, this split session has occurred in commarts in years past? Do you remember that being one of the topics discussed?
Yes.
And there was more than one person who kind of brought that up. Is that a fair statement, for instance?
That is true.
And do you remember who it was that brought that up, ma'am, during the, during the meeting?
I believe I said it.
Okay, that's fair. And there's been some testimony that Nancy Groves brought it up. Do you remember Nancy talking about it?
Yes.
And do you remember any of the others bringing it up? Or just that others did bring it up?
I just know that others agreed that, yes, we had done this in the past.
And in addition, I want to change to a little bit different. Do you remember there being discussion that the schedules had gone up and were reviewed by the district testing coordinator, the DTC? Do you remember that being one of the topics?
I do not remember that.
Do you deny that as a topic or not recall one way or the other?
I just don't recall that discussion.
That's fair. Do you remember there being discussion about how the DTC had gone, had gone on to DESI? In other words, it was believed that DESI had these schedules. Do you remember that?
I do not remember that.
Okay. One way or the other?
Not one way or another, no.
And were some folks saying, hey, yeah, I think it's okay, and some folks saying, hey, I don't think it's okay? However, many there were, but is that some and some?
I, I believe I would characterize it as there were those that believed that since we had done it in the past, that we should continue, and there were those that were definitely opposed to it.
Okay. And, and at a later time, did you know that there was a hierarchy of DTC, district testing coordinator and testing, school testing coordinator, and then test examiners as part of the MAP testing hierarchy? Did you know that?
Yes, I did.
And did you have any understanding as to who it was under the DESI that was doing and creating the schedules?
After it became evident that there had been some issues, yes.
Okay, afterwards.
Yes.
Okay. Did you know whether the testing coordinator here had faxed this schedule to the district testing coordinator? You probably wouldn't know one way or the other.
I didn't know that, no.
All right.
Science teacher.
I understand. All right. And as to the final schedule, you said something about, I don't understand the shot. Ah, I used the wrong word. Do you remember it being discussed that it went to the central office?
Yes.
There you go. All right. What was discussed about the fact that the schedule was sent to the central office?
That the central office received it.
All right.
And that-
And, keep going.
And that that's, that was the last I had heard about it, is that the central office had received the schedules.
And then maybe I need to use a different word. Now, do you remember there being some discussion that it was believed the central office sent it on to DESI?
Yes.
All right, there we go. And cumulatively though, in the end, this split session ended up being part of the schedule and was sent out to eighty-five people. You remember the mass emailed everybody?
Yes.
All right. Now, at the time that it was sent out and so on and so forth, if you believed that this thing, with any certainty, that this thing was in violation of a, of a DESI rule, I mean, you would have spoken up as opposed to, hey, you know, there's some uncertainty both ways. Do you see what I'm saying?
I did not speak up.
Yeah. Did you believe there was some uncertainty going both ways? Is that why you didn't speak up in part?
I believed that we had done it in the past.
Basically, is it fair, well, strike that. Oh, that's right. Ma'am, the schedule was brought to the leadership team and discussed, and then from your observation, the BLT refined that schedule?
Yes.
It would be a fair statement from your observation that it was a collaborative effort? And then there was this discourse that went back and forth?
If you mean by collaborative, we looked at it and agreed to do what was on the schedule?
Sure.
Then yes.
But there was some, do you remember Becky having any notes that she brought with her as to suggestions for the schedule?
I do not recall.
Okay. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Larrington.
Thank you.
Ms. Larrington, if I heard correctly, I think you said, when talking about the schedule and about the splitting the schedule at the building leadership team committee, you said, some agreed and some said, we had done it in the past, so it's okay. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me who specifically agreed that we'd done it in the past, so it was okay?
I probably was one of those people.
Anybody else you can think of?
I can't name anybody else right off the bat, no.
And who ultimately, your impression from that meeting, who had the ultimate say in the schedule at the middle school?
Mr. Kirksey.
Thank you.
Get ready for an objection, Betsy. How's that to announce, but I'll be brief. Hey, the take the heat comment?
Yes.
Or, you know, I'll take care of, you know, if central office, in the BLT, had there been occasions before where there'd been discussions and Sean had said something to the effect or substance of, hey, if central office comes back, you know, I'll address it, or I'll stand up for you guys, or I'll take the heat, whatever was said? But that content had been what Sean had expressed in prior occasions?
Yes.
And did you appreciate that?
Yes.
Why? Well, please give me some deference since it's a fairly, a fairly, and I'll be short. Thank you. And on this occasion, that statement, it was, as you said, it had been said in prior, was in the context of this discourse of, that we've already discussed? In other words, the history and some saying, yep, and some saying, nope. Was it in that context?
Yes.
That's all.
Jane Riddle.
Ms. Riddle, how long have you been employed in the district? Twenty-four years?
This is my twenty-fourth year.
And you have been on the BLT since its inception?
That's correct.
You were aware that there was, you was aware that there was a teacher that was alleged to have cheated on the MAP test, helping a student?
Yes, I am.
And did you have any belief that Mr. Kirksey knew about that and failed to report it?
Yes.
What's the source of that belief?
I saw in the newspaper that the district found out about it on, over the weekend. And one of our paraeducators had brought a student to me and thought I needed to hear the story. And she had alleged that a math teacher had cheated on the test, Mrs. Bell. And she wasn't sure which teacher she was talking about. So I spoke to the student, and when I found out who it was, I reported it to Pat McQuarter in the guidance office. And I checked back with her later, and she said that she had reported to Mr. Kirksey.
As far as you know, Mr. Kirksey didn't report it on?
I don't know.
With respect to the BLT discussions about the split schedule for seventh grade second session, do you remember that, that discussion?
I do.
Okay. And in your experience, longtime BLT member, long-term staff member, who makes the testing schedule at Camden Town Middle School?
The principal.
Principal, Mr. Kirksey?
Yes.
When Mr. Kirksey discussed having a split schedule for seventh grade Communication Arts performance, was there dissension from that?
There was. Nancy Groves, I know. Pat McQuarter and Becky Ruggles, I know they dissented. And there was a discussion.
Nancy Groves, in 2013, she objected to the split schedule as being potentially violative of DESI rules?
Yes.
And Pat Groves had, had raised that issue in previous years about the split scheduling, hadn't she?
I don't know.
Yeah. Have you sat in on, on BLT sessions where the MAP testing was discussed with the split session?
This is the only time I remember the discussion.
Okay. After everyone had their say about objecting to it and raising the issue that this is a potential violation of MAP testing rules, what did, what did Mr. Kirksey say, if anything?
He said that this would be the schedule we'd follow, and if there were any problems, he'd take the heat or take the hit, something like that.
So I'll take care of it, and that's it? And he made the final decision about having split testing to your idea?
Mm-hmm.
I have nothing further. How do you say your last name, ma'am?
Riddle.
All right, that's better, okay. Ms. Riddle, I just have a few things. Hey, historically, you've been on the building committee how long, ma'am?
Since its conception. I don't remember. It's been a long time.
We're all getting, some of us are there. It's been a long time. Would there be kind of going back and forth and an open and frank discussion among the committees on different issues during the years?
I'm sorry?
Would there be a back and forth on issues during the years where the committee would discuss issues?
Yes.
Some in favor and some again? Sometimes?
Sometimes.
Okay. And in years prior, had you heard Sean make some statement to the effect of, hey, if central office has a problem, you know, I'll cover your backs, or I'll take the heat, or I'll be the one that steps up? Anything of that substance, ma'am? I'm not saying those were exact words, but the idea.
Yes.
Okay. And on this occasion, and we've already heard some testimony, do you remember the topic of people saying, hey, historically, there'd been split sessions before?
I really don't remember that.
You don't remember it one way or the other?
No.
Do you remember people talking about how the schedules had gone to the central office?
No.
Okay. Do you remember that one way or the other?
No.
Do you remember discussions of different people? There's been discussion from Amy just a moment ago, or there's been, there's been this testimony about Nancy Groves, talking about how historically there'd been split sessions before. You don't remember that?
I don't remember the talking about split sessions. We were just talking about that particular test, from what I remember.
All right. Had there been split sessions before, Jane?
Let's see. I really don't remember. I remember many, many years ago, we did a block schedule, and I think eighth hour was split. And I'm not sure. I don't recall if we split like it was part one and part two. I really don't know.
Are you in commarts by chance?
No, I'm special education.
Do you remember 2010, there being a split session of commarts?
I don't remember.
Do you remember DESI being here in 2010?
No.
You probably didn't. They probably stayed at central office.
I really don't.
All right. Whenever the statement was made about taking the heat or, you know, whatever, it was in relation to, and matter of fact, it specifically said, hey, if central office has an issue and sends it back down, I'll address it, I'll take the heat. Isn't that a fair statement?
If DESI has an issue.
Okay. Do you remember it being DESI? Okay. Do you remember part of the discussion being that it went from central, the schedules went from central office to DESI, on to DESI? Do you remember that?
No, I just remember that if DESI had a problem.
Okay, okay. Oh, do you remember there being a preliminary schedule that the building leadership team had at the very beginning, a preliminary schedule? Kind of a rough draft?
It was a rough draft, but the decision was made at that point by the principal.
And you say the decision's made, you're going back to Sean saying, hey, this is the way we're going to do it, after a discussion was had among the members?
It was the building leadership team.
Right.
And brought the schedule in.
Right.
And this was the schedule that we had planned.
Okay.
And there was some dissension.
Right. And then there were some, right. And there were some dissension, some saying it was okay and some saying we've done it in the past.
I don't think anyone said it was okay.
Okay. There was this discussion, oh, that's right, you didn't remember those. All right. Do you know, have you heard of a district testing coordinator?
Yes.
What did you believe they did related to the schedules? Did they receive them, or do you know?
I don't know.
Is the district testing coordinator in the central office?
Yes.
That's all.
Laura Martin. I just had a quick question. I was a little confused about your testimony right at the beginning. And I think that they were asking you about whether or not Mr. Kirksey was dealing with the allegations against the, the math situation? Is that what you were talking about?
I, I had reported it, and I don't remember if it was on a Thursday or Friday. And I was surprised when I saw it in the newspaper that the district was informed on the weekend. Because I knew I had reported it earlier.
So you read in the newspaper that it was reported over the weekend?
Right.
And so, but do you know whether Mr. Kirksey had been dealing with that before?
That I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up by either one of you with respect to that?
Did you, did you, did you report this alleged test violation involving a math teacher? Did you report that to anyone?
I reported it to Pat McQuarter in the guidance office because Becky Ruggles was not available at the time.
Do you know if Mr. McQuarter reported it on to anyone else?
I checked back with Mrs. McQuarter later, and she said she'd reported it to Mr. Kirksey.
Thank you.
Ms. Riddle, did you give an interview to Roma France?
Yes.
Did she take notes? I haven't seen the statement or the notes.
I did not make a written statement.
Okay.
Jane Seifert.
Ms. Seifert, you're here because you've been subpoenaed to testify. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So you're not here because you have nothing else to do?
Right.
Okay. And at the present time, you teach seventh grade Communication Arts?
That's correct.
And how long have you worked for the district?
I've worked for the district for ten years.
Okay. And that's all been in Communication Arts?
I was a para for two years at Oak Ridge. And the rest of the time, Communication Arts, yes.
Do you remember a conversation with Mr. Kirksey with the Communication Arts Department about the MAP scheduling?
Yes.
Okay. When was that?
I believe that the first year that we had this conversation was the first year that we were at the new middle school, which was the old high school. that we were at the new middle school, which was the old high school.
Okay, and it was a question raised with the Communication Arts teachers about whether the performance event should be split into two sessions, or whether that would violate DESI rules?
Yes, that was the discussion.
What do you recall from that conversation?
I recall that we were quite upset with the fact that it would be split into two sessions, because we knew that in the past it had been, it was one session. And we questioned Mr. Kirksey on this, and he told us that he had called someone at DESI.
Wait a minute, now, he told you that he had called somebody from DESI? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And did he give you the impression that the person at DESI had cleared this?
He told us that the person at DESI could not give a definitive answer to him when he asked him.
Couldn't give a definitive answer about whether you could, whether the rule that says one sitting is a rule? The statement was from Mr. Kirksey that the person from DESI couldn't give him a clear answer?
Yes.
Okay, and did he share with you what that question was that the DESI individual was perplexed by?
He told us that he had called DESI and talked to someone, and asked them about dividing session two into two sessions.
Did he tell you who that was?
He did not.
Okay, and he told you that the DESI person could not tell them whether the session could be done in one sitting or more than one sitting?
He said he could not give him, he did not give him a clear cut.
And you're aware of the examiner's manual, aren't you, that call?
Yes, sir.
And you're aware about how many sittings the manual calls for?
Yes.
How many is that?
For session two, it is one sitting.
Okay, is that clear to you when you read that?
Yes.
So is it, did Mr. Kirksey try to calm the crowd and say, hey, you know, I've talked to somebody from DESI, it's not a problem?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, did he try to calm the dissension by saying, I've talked to somebody from DESI? Well, I think she has a present sense impression about what was happening. She was in the meeting, she was in the... Did you form a present sense impression concerning what Mr. Kirksey was attempting to do with this DESI statement?
Mr. Kirksey, when we were questioning the session being divided into two days, Mr. Kirksey tried to explain to us that he had taken other action and gone further by calling this person at DESI.
And did he tell you that he would take the heat for any problem?
Yes, sir, he did.
Prior to this 2010-2011 meeting, had there been other discussions about splitting the Communications Arts test?
The meeting that he had with us, where he talked about calling DESI and splitting it, was the first or second year we were at the new high school. It came up again in 2010-2011, and we had the discussion again.
The same result?
I don't remember that he told us about calling DESI.
Did he decide that you were going to do the testing and split session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and in 2013, it came up again, didn't it?
Yes.
Okay, were again objections raised?
No, not as many.
Okay, now, you've described for the board three times when Mr. Kirksey has given assurances what he was doing was okay. And some board, there's been some testimony that some people say, well, we've always done it that way. Have we always done it that way because Mr. Kirksey has given assurances that it was okay, and we did it?
We have not always done it that way.
Pardon?
We have not always done it that way.
And what's the basis for that statement, Ms. Seifert?
My first year at the middle school, when we were at the old middle school, we did session two in one day.
I have nothing further.
Ma'am, do you say your last name, Seifert, is that right?
Seifert.
Seifert, okay. Are you a member now of the Building Leadership Team?
I am on the Building Leadership Leader Team as of the start of this school year.
Okay, but were you a member of that BLT committee before the start of the school year?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought I misunderstood, because you're a bunch of questions about raising objections or not raising objections in statements made. So in 2013, you were not at that BLT meeting where the MAP schedule was discussed, is that true?
True.
Nor any of the prior years, true?
True, not at the BLT meetings.
Well, then, was there a separate occasion then, I guess after the BLT meeting, it had its discussion, and the testing coordinator had turned in the schedule, and we were getting ready for the test? Is this a separate meeting of some group of individuals?
We have meetings every year before we test. They are called MAP training meetings.
Okay.
With the faculty or the core teachers that are giving the MAP test.
Okay, so what you're talking about is a meeting after the BLT meeting, but before the test is given?
Yes.
Okay, and at that meeting, are you telling me that somebody brought up something about the split session?
Yes, when the schedule was given to us.
Okay, and there's some statements in here that where you told Becky that this is the way we've done it in the past. Do you remember telling Becky that? Becky Long Ruggles, do you know Becky?
I do know Becky.
Okay, what did you tell Becky?
And I'm sorry, I don't know what statement you're talking about that...
Yeah, well, did Becky talk to you about whether there'd been split sessions in the past?
I don't remember.
Okay, did Becky talk to you about whether COM Arts had been split in the past?
Not to me.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is, is in her statement, she talks about talking to Pat McQuarter, Susan Grady, and Jane S.E.I.F.E.R.T., and Nancy Groves, if she understood the practices in place correctly, they understood, and then she says, to my dismay, at the practices and my feeling, a poisonous at changing them, and told me that it was the way it had always been done. Do you remember telling that to Becky?
I'd have to look at that statement more carefully before I could answer that question.
Yeah, that's, it's okay, it's not yours, it's Becky's statement of what she says, they, referring to the people above, say it's the way it had always been done. But you don't remember telling her that?
No, not specifically.
Okay, but by the time you got to, even during this training meeting, do you remember some people, anybody at all, saying, hey, there had been a history where there'd been split sessions before? For instance, 2000... For instance, 2009, 2010? Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'll do it more specifically. Do you remember the performance event of COM Arts for the 2009-2010 year, and it being a split session?
I have to think back for a minute on the different sessions, because the years kind of run together, so...
Yes, ma'am, they do. Take your time.
Okay, could you ask me that one more time, please?
Sure, sure, 2009, 2010. Do you remember the seventh grade COM Arts being a split session that year?
Yes.
Okay, how about, and do you remember the one in 2004? That's been even a few years past, so we're checking your memory.
I'm sorry, I was not COM Arts teacher, I was a parent down at Oak Ridge in 2004.
Okay, that's fine. In 2009, 2010, were you with COM Arts?
Yes.
Okay, and that was a split session then, all right. Was there a discussion at the training meeting then, in 2009, 2010, or do you recall?
We seem to have this discussion every year since we split the sessions.
Okay.
So I would have to say yes.
Okay, and not just this issue, but had there been other occasions when you'd heard Sean say, hey, I'll go to bat for you, or I'll take the heat if Central Administration has an issue with what we're doing? Do you remember him saying that on other topics, ma'am?
That's kind of difficult for me to answer.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why.
Sure.
I'm not sure if I've ever had him say those actual words at other times, but I guess we've known that he would do that for us.
Okay, okay. Oh, you said something about the year we moved in from the middle school to the old high school, and I'm sorry if I'm saying that incorrectly. Some school moved from school to school.
My first year in the district, we were at Hawthorne, when that was the old middle school, and then we moved, when the high school was built, we moved the middle school to the old high school.
All right, and do you know when that was? The reason I'm asking is that was part of your conversation about...
Yes, it is.
When was that, ma'am?
Maybe 2006, 2007.
Okay, and lastly, I mean, you're sitting here telling us to the best of your recollection, and I appreciate that, okay? It's no fun for any of us to be here, and especially if you're asked asking questions. But as to the call that Sean made to DESI, ma'am, can you tell us with any certainty, strike that out, I'm going to start over a little bit. Ma'am, do you remember him talking about DESI and how there was this question between giving them as long as they could and doing a single event, and whether it was one the same? In other words, there was an interpretation question and a conflict in the examiner's manual? Do you remember that, Jane?
No.
All right, well, as you sit here today, do you deny, or do you not recall one way or the other, that Sean was telling them that he'd made the call about how long duration and whether additional time could be given? Related to testing?
Could you repeat that one more time, please?
Sure, as far as the DESI call, you can't tell us whether it was specifically only about the split session, or about additional time being given to students, or just another DESI-related issue? Is that a fair statement? I mean, this is 2006, 2007.
He told us, he told us this when we were talking about the split session.
Okay, when you were talking about the split session, and I respect that, but as far as the call to... Okay, I'm sorry if I interrupted.
Okay, we were questioning about the split session. That was our big concern, the split session that we were going to do, a session that was supposed to be given in one day, we were going to be giving it in two days, okay? So that was what we were questioning him about. That's what we were most upset and concerned over, and that's when he told us that.
Okay.
Didn't apply to anything else, as far as I remember in my mind. That's what I was most concerned about, was that I was taking a session that was supposed to be done in one day and putting it into two.
So now, but you can't tell us the question that Sean asked the DESI person, right?
I cannot.
Okay, all right, nothing further.
You may not be able to tell us the question that Sean allegedly made when he called DESI, but you can tell us the context of how that arose, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is the context?
The context was that he had called to ask if we could take that session and split it into two days, but I did not know the exact words to use.
Thank you.
Laura Martin, were you a Communication Arts teacher in the district before Mr. Kirksey was Assistant Principal at the middle school?
I was not.
Okay, so do you know if it was Mr. Kirksey that began the practice of splitting the sessions?
I do not, because I was not here before, but I do know that my first year, we did not split the session.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions as a result?
No.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
The board's going to adjourn at this time for thirty minutes. Ma'am, would you please rise so I can swear you in?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I do. Nancy Groves.
Ms. Groves, you're presently employed as the, in the seventh grade Communications Arts Department at Camden Middle School?
Yes.
And you are present, the chair of the department?
Yes.
And you have, you're starting your twelfth year with the district?
That's correct.
Okay. There's been some question about the splitting the Communication Arts seventh grade second session performance event, and you're probably aware of that. During the time that you, before Mr. Kirksey became principal of the middle school, who was the principal?
Mr. Ray.
And during the time that you worked with Mr. Ray, was the seventh grade performance event ever split?
Not under Mr. Ray.
And the first year that the, to your knowledge, since you've been with the district, the first year that it has been split was under Mr. Kirksey?
Yes.
Okay, and that likely was around, somewhere around 210?
Close to that, I'm not really good with dates.
Did you have, as chair of the Communications Arts Department, did you have any concerns about the legality of splitting the performance event into two sessions rather than one?
Yes, I did. When he announced the schedule to those that were giving the test as a faculty, I set up a meeting with him, to meet with him privately, and I said that I thought that what we were doing didn't match the examiner's test booklet instructions.
Why did you meet with him privately?
I guess I thought that was my place, as a teacher to a boss.
And was the, was the whole idea of splitting the test, was that discussed in the open with the rest of the staff?
It was, it was shared with the staff as the schedule that we were going to follow.
Other than yourself, were there any other objections?
In that early first year?
Yes.
No.
Okay, who was your consort then?
I believe that would have been Mr. Heiner.
Okay, and did Mr. Heiner, to your knowledge, ever voice any concerns about the way the test was split? Did you have any understanding of whether... Did you have any understanding of whether Mr. Heiner may have had a problem with that test arrangement?
I do not know about his opinion.
Okay. Who was it, was it just one consular at that point?
No, Pat McQuarter was still, was counselor also.
Okay, did Ms. McQuarter, did she voice any concerns about splitting the test?
Not that I recall.
Okay, you were the Lone Ranger.
In that private meeting, yes.
Okay, and what did, how did Mr. Kirksey respond to your concerns?
He smiled and said that he was the administrator, and that he, it was his job to make the schedule, and that he would take the heat if there was, if it was necessary.
This was back in two ten?
Yes.
He was the administrator, he'd make the schedule, and he'd take the heat, and that was the end of that?
That's how I took it.
Did you have an understanding in two thousand ten who made the map testing schedule at Camdenson Middle?
No, I did not have an understanding of who did that.
Okay. Were you involved in discussions this year, in two thousand thirteen?
Yes, it was brought up again, because we had been without the performance event for several, for a few years. And then when they reinstated it, the two counselors brought it up at the meeting of everyone who was together to, who had participated as test monitors.
When you say they brought it up, what did they say?
They said that this, it bothered them that it did not match the instructions in the test booklet, splitting it up to two days, that they thought that was wrong.
And were you asked whether kids, students would score better if they had two sessions rather than one?
Mr. Kirksey did ask me that question, and I remember pausing. And I said, well, any COM Arts teacher would tell you that a writer is always better off to let a draft rest.
What, go ahead.
But I wasn't proposing that we should break a rule.
And you had private, and you felt that splitting the test was breaking the rule?
Yes.
Okay, and that had been your position back in two thousand ten?
Yes.
Did Mr. Kirksey ever mention to you, or the staff, that he had talked to someone at Desi?
At the same meeting, is how I recall it, he mentioned that he had talked with someone in Desi. He didn't say a name. He said that his response was vague enough, didn't make it sound, he did not think that we were doing anything wrong.
So, he didn't tell you what the question was?
No.
He just said it was vague, and so he could go, he could do what he wanted, in essence?
I don't know that. He just made mention that he had talked with someone from Desi, and that they did not give any negative response, you know, it was not a negative response, and he thought they were doing okay.
I don't have any further questions.
Good evening, Ms. Groves.
Good evening.
Hey, the private meeting, when would this have been, ma'am?
It was probably either on my conference period, or after school, would be my guess.
You're being more specific than I intended. Do you know what year it was?
If two thousand ten was the first year the schedule changed, I confess freely that I am bad with dates. But it was the first year that that schedule was issued. I do know that.
So, do you remember there being a COM Arts performance event with a split session during the oh nine, oh ten year?
Yes.
All right, do you think it's the same year as that, or is it before, or do you know? Because there were other...
I was there before that, and no, we did not have a split session.
Okay, of COM Arts, how about two thousand four? Do you remember the split session of COM Arts in two thousand four?
I do not remember a split session in two thousand four.
Okay. And the private meeting, were you a member of the building leadership team that year?
There was not a building leadership team at that time. We'd not gone through professional learning communities training yet. I was, as department chair, I thought it was my job to bring that concern forward, since we were, that was a big, we're a big test area.
All right, in oh nine, oh ten, was there a BLT committee? I'm kind of hearing that there wasn't, as you understood.
Was not.
Okay, so, okay, and then I wrote this down, you don't know who drafted the schedule in that oh nine, oh ten, is that right?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You didn't know who drafted the schedule in oh nine, oh ten? Did I, did I hear correctly?
What you heard me say was that there, I did not know whose responsibility it was to make the schedule, but that Mr. Kirksey had said he made the schedule.
Was there a person who had the testing coordinator's position during that time period?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure, was there a person who held the title for map testing, a testing coordinator during that time period, the oh nine, oh ten?
I'm sure there probably was.
Hey, in two thousand thirteen, were you a member of the building leadership team, ma'am?
Yes.
All right, and there's already been some conversation. Amy Larrington was here, and others have discussed it. Do you remember a topic of the discussion, someone saying, hey, those schedules are sent to Central Office? Do you remember that?
I'm thinking.
You take your time.
The schedule was discussed at BLT.
And was the topic discussed that the schedule is sent to Central Office?
I think we've always known that the schedule was sent to Central Office, even prior to that.
You're saving some time, thank you. How about the topic, was the topic discussed that Central Office sends it on to Desi? Do you remember it being...
No, I do not know about that.
Okay, do you remember anyone bringing that up during that meeting, from your recollection? There's already been some...
To my recollection, no, okay.
And do you remember there being some discussion as to, well, performance events and communication arts has been split in the past? For instance, the two thousand nine, two thousand ten?
I think everybody probably that had been at the building for that duration knew that we had had a split schedule before.
Oh, yes. How long has the building leadership team been around, to your knowledge?
Okay, maybe I'm wrong. Probably about five years, so that would put two thousand nine, two thousand ten, wouldn't it?
Do you remember the schedules being done in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and the building leadership team discussing in part?
I don't believe I was on building leadership team at that time. I believe that that was Lee Smith.
So, do you know whether by the time you had your private meeting, the BLT had already met and decisions had been made, and then you had your private meeting, or was your private meeting before, or do you know?
The private meeting was right after I saw the schedule.
Okay, so the schedule had already been published in some form or manner? Probably an email to everybody. Is that a fair statement? Now, do you remember in two thousand thirteen, the email that had all the schedules on it and went to, well, it went to eighty-five people? Do you remember receiving the schedule then?
We always received a schedule.
And on the BLT meeting, when you left that meeting, were there some folks that were saying, hey, this is what we've done in the past? Here's a history, and some folks saying, no? Did you kind, do you remember just in general there being some pluses and minuses as to the split session discussion in two thousand thirteen?
I do not remember a lot of discussion about it.
That's fair enough. Oh, has Sean made the statement in the BLT meeting, or just to the, to the people in the middle school, anything of the substance of, I'll take the heat, or hey, if Central Office has an issue, I'll go to bat for you? Has he made those type of statements before, Ms. Groves?
Yes, he had. He made it in twenty, this past year, the twenty thirteen year.
Okay, and is that similar to the discussion as to the twenty thirteen BLT meeting you told us about?
Yes, I was talking about the BLT in twenty thirteen.
All right, thank you, Nancy, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Laura Martin, so you had some concerns in two thousand nine and ten, or ten, I guess?
Yes.
About the split schedule. So did then you knowingly administer the test that you knew was noncompliant?
Did I talk to any administ...
No, did you knowingly administer the test in a noncompliant way?
Do I normally administer?
Did you knowingly, did you know that you were going to be...
Yes.
Yes, okay, so two thousand ten and two thousand thirteen, you believed you were administering a test in a noncompliant way?
I believed I was faced with the decision to possibly lose my job.
And that was gonna be my next question. What did you think would happen if you called Roma to clarify it?
When I was having my first concerns about it, I spent a lot of time wrestling with it. I spent a lot of time praying about it. And I thought that since the schedule was forwarded, that that would either settle it or not settle it. In other words, I thought someone would raise a concern further up. But I didn't really understand probably that really her job is just to house the schedules. She doesn't have to review all the schedules.
Okay, yeah, so you didn't think that you needed to call about that, or say anything, because you figured that somebody would catch it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's great, thank you.
Do you have to follow up with respect to...
I do, please. Ms. Groves, Ms. Martin asked a great question. Did you, did you feel that you were forced to give a test in a manner you thought was noncompliant with map testing guidelines?
I felt, being a recent widow, that I didn't have a lot of options.
And so because of your financial situation, personal situation, you decided to administer a test that you had questions about its legality?
Yes.
All right, that's fine, thank you.
And it was a test that you had questions about, but like you said a moment ago, you knew, as you told us earlier, it was going up to Central Office, and someone would check it correct if it was to be...
I assumed, and that usually gets people in trouble.
Yeah, or charges. Nothing further.
Was that an assumption you made, or did you have any basis for that belief, that somebody up above would look at this?
I, I just assumed that that was the way it was done. I had never asked any questions about it.
Do you know, as you sit here today, what the responsibility of the district test coordinator is with respect to schedules?
I understand that better now, because I've had it explained to me.
What's your understanding now?
My understanding now is that the person houses those schedules and has it in readiness for when Desi comes to visit, and then they present the schedules for the visitors.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
So, there's been a slide number twenty-seven that we've talked about ad infinitum. The person who explained to you, I'm guessing, is Roma France?
The person who...
Who explained to you that she just maintains it and doesn't read it?
No, no, no.
Who was it, ma'am?
Counselors in my building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go let my dog out.
I do. Sean Machino.
Sean, you're, you teach jockativity at Camdenson?
Physical education.
That's what I, that's what I...
Physical education.
When I, when I taught jockativity, some of the communication arts teachers used to call it jockativity. This is a higher level than what you're used to functioning at.
Probably.
Anyway, you've been with the district since the oh seven, oh eight school year?
That is correct.
And you function as a PE teacher, and you coached the Laker football team?
That is correct.
And the Laker, you only teach, coach one sport?
I have done track and wrestling here, and the offseason weight program also.
Okay, great. You're on the BLT this year?
Yes.
This is the first time? First time you've been on the BLT?
Yeah, last year was my first year.
And do you recall a meeting this spring with the BLT, in which the map schedule was discussed?
Yes.
And do you recall that discussion focusing on whether the performance event for communication arts seventh grade had to be done in one sitting, or we could do it in two without violating Michigan, or MISHIP, without guiding, violating map test guidelines?
I do remember the ninety-minute session being divided into two forty-five-minute sessions. Nothing was said about any guidelines, though.
Okay, did, do you remember anything that Becky, Becky Ruggles had to say at that meeting?
She did bring up the point that it was in the handbook, or whatever it was. She said it need, the book said it need to be one-time session.
Okay.
Yes.
And who presented the schedule? Was it prepared by the principal, or who?
I don't know who, who prepared the schedule.
And when Ms. Ruggles raised the issue about the propriety of giving in the split session, did Mr. Kirksey respond?
Yes, he did say that, you know, we are gonna go ahead and do a ninety-minute session, and we've been doing it this way for a number of years, six or seven, and that he's turned that schedule in each year, and we're gonna continue to do it this way.
Okay, that was his decision to do it this way?
That's the feeling that I got.
And did he tell, did he relate to the BLT, that he'd take the heat part?
You know, I don't know if it was those words or not, but that's the feeling that I, I got, you know, he, yeah.
Okay, I have no further questions. Mr. Machino, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, was the, the split session the only topic discussed during this BLT meeting?
Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen?
No, I apologize, two thousand thirteen, two thousand, this past spring.
This past spring?
Yes.
No, that, I mean, we discussed all of the map testing during that.
And do you remember there being what's been called a preliminary schedule, or kind of one that, that people started with? That was kind of vague and rough?
It seemed to be, I mean, we were, we were going through it, just kind of talking about, we moved a lot of dates around, so there, I don't think there's anything said. I was trying to figure out whenever I was gonna do my testing, and they kept moving the dates.
And you said the word "we." We moved a lot of things around. Who are you talking about when you said the word "we"?
The BLT members.
Okay, and we moved a lot of things around on what, sir?
Well, just the dates and what, you know, what dates that we could do a certain test, and whether, if I remember correctly, moving up a date, because we had, it seemed like a bigger window this year to do the map testing. So, we may have started a little bit sooner than what the preliminary schedule might, might have said. And so at that time, we were just discussing as a team which dates would fit in better, and where we should.
And was part of this discussion as a team, was a topic also raised as to the split session of the COM Arts, the seventh grade COM Arts?
It was discussed.
Now, let me, let me walk through that some, Sean. The, do you remember some people, do you remember anyone? I'll do it, start with just anyone. Do you remember anyone voicing, hey, we have done this in the past, or anything of that substance?
What was the question again?
Sure, we're on this, we've talked about other things being discussed and things moved, and I'm up to the split session, okay? That portion of this discussion. Do you remember anyone saying anything of the substance of, hey, we've done this in the past, related to a split session?
I don't remember anybody saying that.
Okay, if there's been some testimony that...
Okay. Uh, i- i- if there's been some testimony that, that Amy Larrington and Nancy Groves and maybe others talked about that, you just don't recall one way or the other?
Yeah, they may have. I, I just didn't, I, I probably wasn't in that conversation.
Do you remember a discussion about how the schedules went to the Central Office?
I do.
Okay, tell us about that, please.
It was, um, a simple statement of, "We're gonna continue to, we've done it for six, seven years. We've turned that schedule into Central Office and so we're gonna continue to do it this way."
Okay, and who was it that made that statement?
Uh, Mr. Kirksey.
Okay, and did anyone disagree or think, or differ that these things have been turned into Central Office before?
And not, not that I recall.
Do you remember a topic being, you know, and then Central Office sends them on to DESI? Or they're sent on to DESI? Anything of that substance, Sean? In other words, they go beyond just the Central Office, they go on to?
They gotta be sent to DESI?
Yeah, do you remember that?
Um, vaguely, I, you know, I, I, I do recall something, m- Mr. Kirksey might have, I think he might have said that, you know, it gets in there and then they turn it in to DESI and I vaguely remember that, possibly. Sorry.
Sure. Now, are, are there others that, that you called besides Mr. Kirksey who are making statements of it's going to the Central Office or it goes on to DESI or, or, or affirming in some nodding and/or word of affirmation?
I don't recall anybody else saying anything like that, no.
And so you have the meeting. Is someone taking notes of all these different moving of the schedules that this being, the, the "we" that are moving the things around? Is someone taking notes or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. I- is someone putting all these teams together so that it can be submitted in some format that's written down, or do you know?
I mean, I was taking my own personal notes, but I know I wasn't gonna turn anything in, you know?
Sure.
Yeah.
The, uh, a- at some point though, does, does a schedule come back to you?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, it's in an email with like eighty-five other people. Do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and did it have this, this split session on it?
That, I'm not for sure. I, I didn't read it, uh, that closely.
There was discussion, uh, in, in the BLT. Had you heard Mr. Kirksey say before any words of the substance of, "Hey, I'll watch your back, you know, if Central Office has an issue, I'll take the heat. Uh, I'll step up to bat for you"? Just, just that concept before?
The concept, yeah. I mean, you know, the concept during that meeting, I have, and, you know, previous times, yes.
Where, where in relation to this discussion was a statement made about, you know, anything like, "I'll take the heat" or, "If Central Office comes back" or "I'll go to bat for you"? Where in the context of this did that, was that statement made?
I know in the, in the past, you know, three years, um, you know, there's been, there's been times in, in, in teachers' meetings that, um, you know, it's been said that, yeah, somewhere along with the assessments, you know, they want us to do a certain type of assessment here, assessment here, and I think this is what's best for kids, so let's stick with this and, you know, I'll, you know, I'll take care of it, you know? If anything happens, I'll take care of it.
Were you interviewed as part of this DESI issue or these, these different things this spring?
No, I was no.
Okay.
I mean, I, I was interviewed through, no, that was a different issue, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah. Were you interviewed related to the split session issue by anyone, sir?
Not until yesterday.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Tim Hatfield? Superintendent at, uh, Camden Town School District?
Yes.
And you have approximately ten years experience, Central Office experience here and at South Shelby?
Yes.
Okay. And this is your twenty-first year in education?
Yes.
We've talked a little bit about the, some of the negative issues with the MAP testing, but what's been the, the school district's history on the MAP testing?
Uh, historically, the Camden Town School District has performed very well on the MAP exam. For sixteen years, we've attained the state's highest level of accreditation. But moreover than that, we, we also utilize MAP scores to gauge the progress of our students locally.
And what is your role in the MAP testing in the district?
Uh, very little.
And why is that?
Um, those duties are delegated to the district testing coordinator and the school testing coordinators.
And that's Roma France?
The district testing coordinator is Roma France, yes.
With respect to, uh, the two thousand thirteen, um, violations of, uh, DESI MAP testing protocols, how did you first become aware that there was a problem at Camden Middle School?
Uh, I received a phone call on a Saturday afternoon that stated that we, we, it was alleged we had two violations of, of testing protocol. One was that a math teacher was, um, signaling students regarding incorrect answers. The other instance was that, um, we might have had students that were left with an untrained proctor.
Okay. At that time, was there any mention of the split testing and seventh grade Communication Arts Performance Event?
No.
Okay. So that wasn't even in the picture at that time?
No, sir.
So based on the allegations of a teacher cheating on the MAP test and allegations that there were untrained proctors administering the, uh, MAP test, what action did you take?
Um, as soon as I hung up from that phone call, I immediately called Roma France and she was our district testing coordinator and asked her, uh, to commence an investigation that Monday morning.
Did you also direct her to notify, to self-report to, uh, DESI?
I did.
And do you know if that happened? I'm sorry.
If, uh, if those allegations appeared to be, be true, or we had enough evidence that we needed to give them heads up, yes.
Okay. At that time, at the time this initial call came in and you asked Roma to conduct the investigation, were you aware that the, uh, performance event at the middle school is being divided into two pieces?
No.
Okay. And, um, i- in your opinion, is that, uh, breaking of that test and giving it in two sessions rather than one, is that a violation of DESI guidelines?
I became aware of that later on. I, I had not, of course, read the, um, testing manuals since I'm, I don't really oversee that. But, uh, I did become aware that that was an issue, yes.
And did you check the test manuals to determine what was said?
Yes.
Okay. And that confirmed your concern that there was a violation?
Yes.
Okay. Now, um, how did you learn about, uh, the additional, uh, alleged violations of, uh, the MAP tests at Camden Town Middle School?
Uh, regarding the split schedule?
Yes.
I had a meeting, a meeting was requested of me by Becky Long Ruggles and, and Pat McWherter. I believe it was May twentieth, and, uh, Mrs. France set, sat in that, uh, that meeting with us. And, um, the, the ladies were feeling some pressure from, from the, uh, other testing, uh, allegations, the violations, and just wanted to make sure that, that we were there to support them. At a point during the meeting, um, Becky and Pat both said, you know, "You may not be aware of this, but, um, session two of the seventh grade Communication Arts session was split, uh, on two, o- over a period of two days."
And what action did you take once you had that information?
I asked Roma to begin the investigation regarding those allegations.
And did you also request that, uh, Roma notify, self-report to DESI?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have a, uh, policy with respect to test security?
Yes, they do.
And that is ILA?
That is correct.
You're twenty, twenty-one years of education experience. If Communication Arts students are allowed to take the test in one setting, are allowed to take the testing in two settings, is there an advantage to doing it in two settings, in your opinion?
In, in my opinion, uh, yes, there would be an unfair advantage to do it over a two-day period of time.
And you're aware, uh, from policy ILA, unfair practices, um, beginning? Maybe not. Beginning at number twenty. Tom, do you wanna refer the board as to what exhibit you're referring to?
I will, but I've gotta get the right one, Michael. It is, uh, exhibit A six. And I'm looking particularly now at, um, pages C four and C five. The last item on those unfair practices, beginning at the bottom of the page, regarding alter, altering test schedules, could you, could you, uh, read that for us, please?
Indicating to students during testing that they have missed items and need to change them, giving students clues or answers to questions, allowing students to give each other answers to questions or the copy of, off of each other's work, or altering test administration procedures in any way, in any other way to give students an unfair advantage.
And do you consider allowing the seventh grade's, uh, split session to be giving an unfair grade, uh, advantage by altering the required test procedures?
Yes.
So you consider what Mr. Kirksey did as to be a violation of policy ILA?
Yes.
The next item up, uh, right above that, number seven. Could you read that for us, please?
Undo pressure or encouragement on the part of administrators for teachers to engage in any of the aforementioned inappropriate or unfair practices.
You were present in the, uh, hearing room when Nancy Groves testified?
Yes.
That she felt compelled to test, uh, to give the test in an illegal full, uh, manner because she was a widow and had some concerns about her personal life?
I did hear that, yes.
Do you consider those teachers, you heard teachers testify how they'd been raised issues that this was unlawful and they went ahead and did it anyway. Do you feel like those teachers were pressured into doing, to violating, uh, MAP testing?
Is that an illegal conclusion or a conclusion that this board will eventually make?
Well, it's a board policy. Do you consider the action of? If you, do you consider, uh, this paragraph to have been violated by requiring teachers to administer a test that they believe to be false?
I do.
And you believe that is a violation?
Yes.
Does board policy ILA also require that all standardized and statewide tests be administered in an appropriate manner and compliance with testing guidelines?
It does.
And do you feel like administering the, um, performance event for seventh grade communications art, um, was administered, uh, in an appropriate manner?
Um, by splitting the schedule, no.
And you, do you believe, uh, do you have an opinion about whether that port of, part of bo- policy ILA was violated?
Yes, I believe that that would violate this policy.
You also are aware of the policies that require that trained, uh, only trained employees be allowed to administer the MAP test?
Yes.
Sitting here reviewing the evidence, do you think Mr. Kirksey's violated that policy as well?
Yes.
Did you, uh, review, uh, I'm sorry, strike that. Did Ms. Roma provide with you a detailed, um, report of her investigation into this variety of, uh, MAP violations at Camden Town Middle School?
She did provide a detailed report, yes.
Did it give, did it raise any concerns with you?
Yes.
And, and what were those?
Um, that we, we violated, uh, DESI testing protocol and we violated our own board policy.
Have you given a thought, um, as a result of all this, um, attention? Have you given any thoughts to what, what can or should be done, what recommendations you might make to the board and how we can minimize our teachers being put under this pressure or potentially violating, uh, DESI rules or having two hundred and seventy of our kids' scores stricken?
Yes.
And, and what are those?
Uh, first of all, I believe there would need to be, uh, stronger oversight from the Central Office regarding, uh, the testing schedule and the administration of the MAP exam.
And you, do you feel that, uh, that requ- was that requirement in place before this year?
No.
Okay. But it's something that you would add as a result of this violation?
Yes, most certainly.
Are there other changes that you would make?
Uh, well, I, I would assume that, um, the Department of Education is going to, um, help make sure we, uh, administer the test appropriately over the course of the next several years also. Um, and I have been in conversations with our state supervisor regarding that.
Do you, do you project that there'll be an impact from the security breaches with regard to the split schedule?
Um, in, in?
Well, you've already incurred some, some, uh, result.
We, we, we do know that with the split testing schedule, we, we lost two hundred and seventy, approximately two hundred and seventy scores for accreditation purposes.
So those scores will not be counted towards, uh, Camden Town's, uh, total for MAP testing?
That's correct. They're not currently counted, nor will they be over the course of the next three years.
Okay. And, uh, I'm sorry, what was the last?
Under MSIP V, under our new accreditation standards, those, those scores will stay with us for three years. Also with, with, uh, MSIP V, the state board has not ruled yet on, uh, a number of the criteria that will be considered in order to, to attain the state's highest level of accreditation. So I, I am not sure how this could adversely impact us as the state board has not set all of their criteria yet. But what we do know is two hundred and seventy scores do not currently count.
And you don't anticipate that you'll, the district will be unaccredited but may not achieve the highest level that you're used to?
No, and I, 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 I have stated to our staff that, um, it is a possibility because we do not know of all the accreditation standards at this point in time, if we will attain the state's highest level of accreditation. But, but in our conversations with DESI, I've, I've never been concerned about the district losing their accreditation.
And irrespective of what the accreditation turns out to be, uh, you are recommending to the board that we make some changes in our test protocols?
I know.
Okay. Let me hand you, uh, what's been marked A three. It's the, uh, it's Mr. Kirksey's contract. Could you read, uh, paragraph six for me, please?
The principal acknowledges that one of the essential job duties of this position is positive communication with the community, any activity criminal or otherwise that becomes. Any activity criminal or otherwise that becomes known to the district after entering into this contract that inhibits the principal's ability to effectively serve as a leader in the school community or in the community at large will be considered grounds for termination.
Do you consider that Mr. Kirksey's actions, as been testified to at this hearing, are in violation of paragraph six?
I do.
And, um, is there a, um, a secondary provision in the contract that requires all principals to adhere to the board's policies and procedures?
There is.
And do you feel that Mr. Kirksey's conduct, particularly with respect to policy ILA, that he's violated those policies?
Yes, I do.
And that is an additional basis for termination?
Yes.
And finally, do you feel that, um, there's just cause to warrant Mr. Kirksey's termination as provided in the contract?
I do.
Now, you've testified that you felt that Sean's conduct violated his contract. I think you've gone through in some detail with me, uh, earlier in my examination. And, and you've testified that his conduct impacted his ability to serve as a leader in the community. Do you have a recommendation to this Board of Education with respect to Mr. Kirksey's continued employment in the Camden School District?
I do.
And what is that recommendation?
I would recommend that his contract be terminated.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Hatfield, uh, you are the person who's brought this charge against Sean, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you understand that you have the burden of proof. A burden of proof, in other words, you have to prove all the elements of your claim against Sean to be true, correct?
Yes.
And that you have to prove it more likely than not to be true, correct? As you understand it? Well, he's already been given the whole, I was about to say a bad word, of legal conclusions, but anyway. So going through this, sir, let, let me make sure, uh, looking at the charge, I'll start there. Mr. Kirksey failed to follow, so, so you're contending for your charge that Mr. Kirksey solely is the one who failed to follow MAP testing protocol? Is that what you intended when you drafted this charge?
Uh, my intent with the charge was that Mr. Kirksey didn't follow MAP testing protocol.
Sure. And so it's your charge that he solely failed to follow? Am I understanding your charge?
That was not the words in the charge.
Well, we've heard testimony from different people here who failed to follow and supposedly, and a district board and who designed and implemented, et cetera. I mean, Mr. Kirksey, it, is this supposed to include others who failed to follow or just Mr. Kirksey?
These are charges for Mr. Kirksey.
Okay. So you're saying Mr. Kirksey solely is the one who failed to follow?
I didn't say that, no.
Now. Well, and I understand, Mike, but it just has his name and, and part of it is I'm trying to understand. You have not. Oh, sure. You, uh, have not brought charges as to Ms. France?
No.
Or Ms. Longruggles?
No.
Did you understand that Pat McWherter left, uh, Janelle Hor, uh, Ms. Janelle Horton, uh, alone, unproctored with a test that was in process?
Yes, I do know that.
And, uh, going through, uh, when you received the report, was that from, uh, on that Saturday, was that from a parent, parent? Or, or a member of, or, or an employee of the district?
Uh, both, as a parent and an employee of the district.
So this person who provided the report was an employee of the district?
Yes, a parent and an employee of the district, yes.
Okay. And when you spoke to Ms. France, uh, you, you called her that same Saturday, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And did you tell her that this was a parent who had made the report or a employee of the district? Or both?
I don't know if I specified. I don't remember that.
Is there some reason that, that you would not identify to Ms. France that this was an employee?
No.
Is this an employee who had done, performed a prior evaluation on Mr. Kirksey? Which had been, a prior performance evaluation, which had been reviewed by a prior board and had board intervention?
Uh, it was an employee who was a supervisor one time of Mr. Kirksey, yes.
And who is this?
It was Dr. Brian Henry.
Sure. And Mr. Henry had done, had a performance evaluation that you had signed off on, correct?
Correct.
And then there'd been board intervention and they reversed your evaluation and he was given a different evaluation, correct?
I'm not aware of board intervention.
Did any member of the board intervene related to that, that performance evaluation?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Randy Dickerson didn't speak with you about it?
Randy Dickerson did not speak with me about it, I remember.
Okay. Was there a subsequent evaluation after the initial one?
Um, I believe that formative was done in June. And yes, there was a follow-up, I believe, in September.
And was that follow-up of the same time period or in part the same time period of the prior evaluation, the first one?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Sure. You had an evaluation, Mr. Henry signed off, you signed off. Was there a later evaluation in part of the same time period of the first evaluation? In other words, the scores were changed? The evaluation was changed?
No, the evaluation was not changed.
Okay. It was reported, when you spoke to Ms. France, uh, at any time during this process, we all looked at slide number twenty-seven. Did she tell you any of the substance of slide twenty-seven? Specifically included that she used to keep in mind certain things when you do schedule the testing? You remember that sentence?
Yes, I remember that sentence.
Well, did Ms. France ever tell you anything in slide twenty-seven as to her scheduling the testing and her responsibilities in slide twenty-seven?
With respect to slide twenty-seven, no, sir.
Did she tell you any of her responsibilities as part of maintaining the schedules?
Yes.
Did she tell you that she didn't read the schedules and had not been reading the schedules since she assumed the DTC position?
Um, I don't know if it was those words that she either had read or not read, but she said that she collected the test schedules.
Okay. What did she say or disclose to you, if anything, as to whether, when she received these schedules prior to testing, she would read them?
I believe she collected the schedules, but I do not remember if she said she read them or not read them.
Okay. So you don't disclose, recall her disclosing one way or the other?
That's what I remember, yes, sir.
Did you, uh, have any expectation of whether your DTC person who received these schedules should read them to ensure compliance?
I did not.
Has something, has that been put in place now that it's come to light that she wasn't reading them? Is she now reading them?
We haven't gone through another testing session, but she will read them next year, yes.
Okay. Why is she going to read them next year?
Because we've obviously had violations that were not caught.
Okay. And how does it help to, for her to read the schedules when they come to her?
She would be able to check them for compliance.
And did Mrs. France ever tell you that she had told Becky or the other testing coordinators, hey, I'm not reading it, so you TC are responsible for compliance?
We never had that conversation.
When Ms. France, uh, you, uh, you assigned her to do the investigation, did it cross your mind of, of what her responsibilities were and whether someone should look into her responsibilities related to?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. What'd you think about that?
Um, I questioned Roma about that. Of course, I was in a previous district that had district testing coordinators and, uh, we were small enough that that, that district testing coordinator didn't check for compliance there. It was left to the school testing coordinator. So when these issues came up, I just, I, I did ask, I said, Roma, how, you know, are, what, what is your role with this? And she said, I follow the district testing coordinator's, um, guidebook and my role is to collect and maintain those for, uh, review by DESI if we're asked.
Did she tell you what the training coordinator's role was? What the training or testing coordinator's role was?
Uh, with the school or the district?
Yeah.
School?
Yeah, here. You, you've been kind enough to tell us that at your prior school, your DTC told you the TC did the scheduling, if I listened correctly?
Yes.
All right. Did, did Ms. France tell you what the TC's role was here related to scheduling of testing?
The district testing coordinator or the school?
Did Roma tell you what the TC's role was?
Both, so both? When you say TC, that's testing?
I'm sorry, the training coordinator, the school training coordinator.
The school testing coordinator?
Yes, the school testing coordinator.
Did she tell me what their roles were?
Thank you.
I, I did get, uh, the training manual that outlined those, yes.
Okay. And, and did you under, what did you understand as to the testing coordinator's role in doing the schedule?
Uh, that the testing coordinator would, would, uh, submit that schedule to, to the district testing coordinator.
And you, did you talk about that with Roma?
Yes.
What did she say?
That the school testing coordinator would get each building's schedule and forward, forward that to her.
Okay. And that included Ms. Becky Longruggles at the middle school?
That would be correct, yes.
And did you have discussions with Roma about the facts she received from the testing coordinator on April fourth, before the nine oh one? The one we've seen here today? Did you talk to her about that?
Yes, I did.
What, what did she say, sir?
She, she informed me that she receives some, uh, testing schedules, some daily testing schedules, uh, but they were, they were not necessarily in the format that she would prefer them to be in. So that they received multiple, uh, building schedules.
Yeah, the, the daily things. So did she tell you how she called Becky back and asked that it be put in a different format?
I don't recall that.
Okay. The, uh, we've looked at the, the dailies and I'm just trying to save some time because I think we know the documents we're talking about. And, and then we looked at the, uh, the one that eventually, after Becky asked for Sean's help, came through Sean in an email. And then we looked at the one that Ginger, Ms. Martin has been kind enough to tell us that she was part of. Have you discussed with Roma how that last one that Ginger did came about?
Not specifically. Learned about that more, um, really later after the investigation or very late in the investigation that there, that Ginger had an error in that in looking at those schedules as she was trying to put those together.
To your knowledge, is, are the daily schedules that Ms. Longruggles has testing coordinator faxed on April fourth, are they the same information inconsistent with, uh, the DESI one-page form that Sean eventually emailed after Becky asked for his help?
Are the daily schedules consistent with the one that Mr. Kirksey sent?
Yes, sir. Have you looked at that?
Yes, yes, I have.
And did you find them to be consistent?
I think it would be difficult maybe to draw that conclusion.
Well, are, are the dailies over a five-day period?
I believe so, yes.
Are the dailies over four sessions?
I believe that after I've heard this, this evening, yeah, you could make that, yes.
Okay. That, that's fine. Slide number twenty-seven. I, I'm not going to go through it, but my question is, since we've all seen it, is, did, did Roma tell you about her interpretation or that she had been taught in 2013 as part of that DTC training, the substance of slide number twenty-seven?
No, sir.
And we went through this today. You remember the one that said you, you know, please keep in this mind when you are doing the, are scheduling testing? You remember that sentence?
On slide twenty-seven? Yes, sir.
Thank you, because it saves putting it up there, okay? Who did you understand the "you" to be within the slide twenty-seven?
Um, if, if that, uh, if that slide was for district testing coordinators, I would assume that would be for the districts.
And when it says scheduling testing, did you understand that to, uh, mean what it says and would be inclusive of the daily schedules, which are the scheduling of testing at the middle school? Yeah. Slide twenty-seven can be read by everybody, so I'll go on. One of your charges, in D, and do you have that available to you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Now, what I have here is what y'all mailed to Sean. Yeah, that looks like the same thing, okay. Now, on D, as a test examiner, now, did, did you understand that the test examiners are not to, uh, have no responsibilities related to the scheduling, like Mr. Mink said? Was that your understanding before you filed this charge?
If you were a test examiner, then maybe it wasn't the building administrator?
It just, you in D say as a test examiner. And you heard Mr. Mink's testimony about how the test examiners, they're not responsible for doing the scheduling. Do you remember that?
I, as a test examiner, Mr. Kirksey was responsible for the correct administration of MAP assessments.
Hey, when, uh, Pat and Becky brought it to your attention, Ms. France said that they were concerned about losing their jobs. Is that what they told you as well?
Uh, I believe there was some discussion about that.
What was the discussion about their concern of losing their jobs?
That was basically it, that they were nervous about losing their positions, yes.
Did Becky tell you that she had knowingly submitted on April fourth a schedule that she believed to violate DESI compliance?
I don't believe it being worded like that, no. I, I believe what, uh, at, at that discussion, I did not know that Becky Ruggles had submitted a schedule.
As far as the hierarchy, before you filed, uh, the charges, did you understand the hierarchy related to the schedules to be the district testing coordinator and below that person, the test, school testing coordinator and below that person, the test examiner, sir?
Yes.
And as to the information you had before you filed your charges, do you, did you have information of whether, uh, the test, the school testing coordinator had submitted the schedules, including the split session in question, to Roma as the district testing coordinator?
I, I did know that Roma had received multiple, uh, schedules regarding the MAP test, yes.
Did you know about the, and you may not have known it was a fax. I understand that, Dr. Hatfield. But did you know that, that Becky as TC, as a school testing coordinator, had sent schedules to Roma as a district testing coordinator?
I do not, I do not believe I was aware of that. But I, I do know Roma received them, but I did not know necessarily who they were all from, necessarily.
So, before you decided to talk, to file charges, tell me what persons you had, uh, spoken with related to the, the DESI portion of the charges, sir?
Related to the split schedule or any, anyone's in particular? With the split schedule, who did I speak with?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I spoke with, of course, Mrs. France. Uh, I spoke with Becky Longruggles. I spoke with, um, Pat McWherter there in that meeting. Pat McWherter. Uh, I spoke with our state supervisor, Jay Breeze. I spoke to, uh, the assessment section at DESI. And I spoke with, um, Bill Gerling, also in the assessment section.
What documents had you reviewed?
What documents had I reviewed?
Yes, sir.
I reviewed, um, Roma's report to me.
Okay. Any other document that you had? Okay, any other document that you had reviewed?
Primarily relied on that report that came from Mrs. France.
Okay, so as far as any, you didn't review any statement that Roma had given as to her responsibilities role?
No, I didn't. There was no statement with Roma's responsibilities, no.
And was there a statement from Becky Longruggles as part of that initial report? Or was that later? And if you need to look at something, we can look at it, sir. I think it's A-12, if I recall correctly. Take a moment and look.
I believe I did review the statements of individuals that are included here.
Okay, and would you be so kind, is Becky's statement part of the investigative report?
Part of A-12, no, there, but I believe they were included. They're not in here, but I believe they were. Are you speaking of A-25?
There is an A-25 there, but do you have a recollection about whether Becky Longruggles' statement was attached or included within Ms. France's report?
I believe I did have that at some point, yes.
But do you think that was part of her reports, what I'm trying to ask, and then I'll go on to something else?
I believe this report was given to me around the 2nd of June.
Okay, and let's look at A-12. I think there's actually a little timeline within this. Oh, it looks like it's on C-207, as a matter of fact. C-207. And let me know when you're there, please, sir. And I point that out to refresh your recollection. What's the last date?
The last date was the submittal, the final report to DESI was on 6/3/13.
June 3rd, that's correct. Now, if you turn to A-25 and go to the last page of A-25, what's the date on that?
That was June 18th on this statement, yes.
And does that refresh your recollection as to whether Ms. France chose to include Ms. Longruggles' statement as part of her investigation?
It does not appear that that was submitted to DESI or part of that report, no.
So, you're told by Ms. France that the testing coordinator is responsible for the schedule, and when you have your investigative report back from her, it doesn't have the person who she said was responsible's statement in it. Is that correct?
It had, it had her, it had her information from Becky in her report in A-12. But not that statement, no, no, sir.
And where is it in A-12?
On C-211.
Okay, C-211. Are we talking about the three lines?
Excuse me?
And I may be mistaken, are we talking about the three lines here on C-211?
Yes.
Okay, so the entire extent of Mrs. Longruggles' information is interview. Ms. Longruggles states that both she and Mrs. McWhorter had questioned the schedule and stated that this was not following MAP testing protocol. And that's the full extent that was in the report given to you?
As a written report, yes. There was also the, there was also a written report to DESI, too, that was given to me.
And was that the one that was committed, that was submitted by June 3rd, or is that a separate one?
No, sir, I believe that was the June 3rd.
Okay, so the full extent is what we just read, those three lines, and then the bigger statement, A-25, as we saw, had a date of June 13 or 15 or something like that?
That's correct.
Did you ever ask Ms. France why she would not take a detailed statement of the person she had told you was responsible for scheduling?
No, we did not have that conversation.
Has anyone offered you an explanation as to why that statement would not be provided as part of the investigation?
No, sir.
Did you make a, you understood that the training coordinator was responsible for scheduling before filing charges as to Sean, correct?
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. You've already told us about the conversation with Ms. France, where she told you the testing coordinator was responsible for the scheduling, including the middle school, correct?
Yes.
And you knew that before you made the decision to file charges as to Sean, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, what would be the reason for not filing charges as to the person who you've been told by the DTC is responsible for the scheduling?
Can you repeat that, please?
I can try. Why would you not file against the TC, the testing coordinator, who you've been told is responsible for the scheduling?
Because I believe that the testing coordinator in her, their conversations was told by Mr. Kirksey that he was going to complete the schedule, that the schedule was what he wanted that to be.
Okay, so that would excuse the, did you believe that would excuse the testing coordinator from knowingly submitting something she believed to be violative of DESI?
Would that excuse her?
Sure.
She was doing what her supervisor asked her to do.
Well, hold on here. In MAP, in MAP, there's the hierarchy we discussed, DTC, TC, and test examiners, correct?
In the world of MAP, yes.
Well, and in the webinar, and everywhere, it says, "If you have questions, test examiners, go talk to your school training coordinator and your district training coordinator." Are you familiar with that?
The training coordinator?
Yeah, the one given to the test examiners. Have you seen that one?
The training coordinator or testing coordinator?
The testing coordinator.
Testing coordinator? If you have a question, go to the testing coordinator?
The test examiner's training says, "If you have questions, you're to go to the district testing coordinator and the school testing coordinator." Are you familiar with that?
No, not that part of it, no, I'm not.
But back to my question, though, so you didn't, in the hierarchy, the person above the testing coordinator is who?
Above which testing coordinator?
Becky. Who's above Becky as to MAP testing? It's Roma France, isn't it?
She would be the district testing coordinator, yes.
That's right. And so, if she thought something was inappropriate or whatever, she was to go to Roma France. That's the person above her for the MAP testing, correct?
In a perfect world, yes.
Okay, and, and, I mean, when you spoke to Becky, did she tell you that Sean had coerced her or overcome her free will to do her job as a testing coordinator? Did she tell you that?
She told, she was led, she told me she was led to believe that that split testing schedule was fine.
That's right, and we all have her statement in A-25. And so, everybody will get to read that, so I'm not going to belabor that point. But in there, it talks about how she had talked to other employees, and they had convinced her that this was the way it was done. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay, and so, it wasn't just Sean. She'd also spoken to other employees, correct?
That's what I heard, yes.
As a matter of fact, she had some specific names. She had Pat McWhorter, Susan Grady, Jane Seifert, and Nancy Groves, correct, on page three?
Yes.
And she's spoken to them, and they told her, "Look, this is the way it's been done historically," correct?
That is correct.
And that there was information that, hey, these schedules go to central office, in other words, the DTC, right?
That was the conversation, yes.
And there was information that the DTC submits them to DESI, correct? Okay. There's, here's the question I was getting to, and I'll go on. Did you have that information before you filed charges as to Sean, what we just went through, in that sequence?
With the testing hierarchy?
No, the one I just went through about the statements of, historically, it's been done, it goes to central office, central office sends to DESI. We just did that 1, 2, 3, and Mike correctly interrupted me, like he correctly does always. But I was leading to the question of, did you have that information at the time you chose to file charges against Sean?
I do not believe I had all of that information, no. I had the information, enough information to file the charges, I did.
Susan Grady, what is your knowledge, if any, as to whether she was trained to be a test examiner?
I do not know that.
What is your knowledge, if any, as to whether Becky Longruggles had Susan Grady proctor tests without being trained as a test examiner?
I do not know that.
What is your knowledge as to whether Becky Longruggles, as testing coordinator, had Susan Grady deal, handle the MAP test and bundle them and put them in boxes? In other words, she was part of the chain of custody related to these tests?
I would not know that.
What is your knowledge as to whether anyone other than test examiners is supposed to be part of the chain of custody related to these tests?
Ejection is, it calls for a legal conclusion. Chain of custody is a criminal issue, it's not a civil issue, and we're asking the witness to offer his opinion on legal issues. I don't think he's qualified to do that. We're wasting time. Other than that, everything's fine.
If I'd known that, I wouldn't have handed him the mic. All right, Tom, thank you, sir. Hey, is it true that none of the eighth grade tests have been dinged, or, and I don't mean to use a, just a general, the eighth grade test, anything happened related to eighth grade tests?
Mathematics or comarts?
At the middle school.
At the middle school, yes, we've lost eighth grade scores.
The eighth grade scores, okay, related to the employee issue, right?
Yes.
Okay, other than the employee issue, that Sean was a part of investigating, correct?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
The employee issue that Sean was part of investigating. He started the investigation and then was in the process whenever you received the call on Saturday, right?
I received a call on that Saturday, and I know Mrs. France had interviewed Mr. Kirksey in that investigation, yes.
And that Sean was in the process of kind of starting that investigation by the time you got the call on Saturday, right?
I believe Sean was looking into that, yes, because that was part of-
That's fair enough, looking into, but other than that, this other situation, any other eighth grade scores been canceled or dinged or whatever in the dickens?
No, sir.
Okay, now, let's also go to charge two for just a moment. Would you agree with Ms. France that, first off, on April 16th, that's the occasion when, do you have the document that she talked about that would tell us whether that was or was not a timed test to thus tell us whether that charge should have ever been filed or not? It's the April 16th, subparagraph C, sir.
Here, I don't have that, no.
Okay, can we get that somewhere so that we can see whether it's timed or not timed and have conclusive evidence, so it's just literally black and white?
We would need to get that eighth grade test.
That sounds great. Now, do you know which one that Sean actually did, whether he did session two as the schedule would have set forth, or another session because he was short of time, specifically session three?
When I received the report that we had an untrained proctor in there and that timeframe was not given, it was my recollection that that was a timed portion of the test.
That's what someone said. Did you ever see Sean's statement as to whether it was timed or not timed?
No, I don't believe I did.
Did you ever see Sean's statement as to whether it was even session two versus session three?
I'd have to go back and look at Sean's statements.
We won't take the time right now, okay, but I appreciate your willingness. Let's turn to the May 3rd. Now, May 3rd is the one where Janelle has, is sent, "Hey, feed them some donuts, wait for me." Do you remember that one, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, and Ms. France talked about how if Sean returned in time to administer the test in a timely manner, there would not be a charge there. Do you agree with that?
Repeat that one time, please.
Sure, and I'll slow down. I apologize. It's kind of late and we're all getting tired. On the May 3rd, that's the one where the donuts happens, and then Pat McWhorter comes in and starts the test. Do you remember that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Sean comes in after. Do you remember that?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's the one where Ms. France said, "Hey, if Sean had returned in time and Pat not started that test, Sean could have started it and then finished it potentially within that same time period, and if that were the case, there would not be a charge." Is that a fair assessment of that one, sir?
That's an assumption, but there would be potential there, I would assume, yes.
Yeah, no, that's fair, because, I mean, Pat comes in and starts the test and leaves, and leaves it with Janelle, which isn't supposed to happen either, right?
That's correct.
I mean, heck, Sean's been charged with leaving someone unproctor, hadn't he?
That's correct.
Okay. And then E, I want to talk about E before I go on. E is whenever Sean takes a phone call about this very, and I'm not going to use names, okay? But is it a fair statement that the situation related to the teacher had immediacy and was a serious situation?
I didn't believe that the phone call was regarding that. I recalled that it was a parent or another administrator.
Well, it was.
It could have been related to that.
It could have been, okay. Well, let's take it it was, because it was. That was, that situation was one of the mediacy and serious. Is that a fair characterization? I can go into specific details if I need to. Oh, absolutely, yes, sir.
Assume that it's dealing with the teacher? Okay.
Yeah, and I thought that's what I'd asked. Yeah, and I thought that is what I asked, I apologize. Immediate and serious, is that a fair characterization?
In that situation, it could be.
One, that if a phone call was received and it was to determine whether that person should continue to be teaching, thus affecting other potentially canceled testing results, it needed to be addressed then before potentially additional testing results were voided as well. Is that a fair statement?
If we weren't in the position of being a test examiner and in that room, it would have-